... Sorry. Go ahead. I'm gonna go back.
We're talking.
We're talking. And this is what I have to say. Every one of you. But I have your office. You are all right. All the passengers. That's it. Awesome.
Are you working?
Yeah.
Oh, great.
We're definitely in California, so. Kind of.
You're supposed to ask your question.
So.
Yeah.
Was it really, uh?
Oh, you said that.
Okay. One or five of that. And so I was really concerned.
Oh, we should.
Okay.
I'll be sorry.
That's. That was the other way.
I feel it's in the driveway.
Yeah.
Unless we're going to choke the smell.
Yeah. So. Yeah, you know, she was she was presenting the hospital in Austin when she retired from the postal office.
I think she's been great.
That's important.
Oh, that was just. I do so often.
Yeah.
You know.
Turned ours loose. You know, so. I don't want to be long. But after I did something.
Yeah.
Or, you know.
Yeah.
She was. I'm here. I think. I think he's like that. I was going to say.
Really, so how does she people?
She had that.
What do you think of this?
Uh.
Oh, how do you try to be home?
I would be trying to.
Twenty years.
We're on that.
Wow. It's yours now.
Yeah, I just I need help.
Okay.
Yeah, we are. Yeah.
She was in the top.
Oh, no.
But it's always been. Put it on.
I haven't seen Roger, saw Roger this far the other day. But he has retired.
Has he?
No way. Because he's.
He's not just he wasn't being as good as he was.
I'm sure it's not wrong. He's not even.
That's the same.
Oh, why'd you hear that? Oh, yeah, that's why they got it.
Which is another thing.
I can't. I beat up. I had his word.
That's amazing.
You sound like. Yeah.
The most. Music.
I'm.
What are you saying?
I had, uh, overdone this. So. This is.
I thought that was.
Oh. It's like frozen. So.
Oh, my.
Only have like one hundred times.
Also no share.
Yeah, I think I know. I speak highly of all the time, you know. Oh, yes. I remember military. I don't know. I had. Of course. Only that you. So I would want to get out.
How many?
I'm like. I mean, if you really does it, okay. Everybody, like he knows. Obviously, first. Why?
What's your stuff?
Can we be more even? That's what I'm saying. I see you small.
I'm very.
I'm very. I'm very small. I think. That's what I'm saying. I'll see you. I'm not that serious. But he's not.
Who's that?
That's what I think. I'm trying to. I was.
Oh, well.
That was a lot. As long as I'm. Also, we've got half a. I was showing them all. That's why. I travel. I do.
I don't know.
I don't know. Oh, no. Oh, because he knows. I'm. I see. So that's not a problem. There were hundreds.
We don't play.
You're good. It's worth it. Here we have. I see him. That was just a walk.
Would you want to stop here? What would I do for you?
I question. When you get out with your kid, like? I don't.
I'm sure right now. That's. I actually.
That's. That's great. I turned sixteen.
You know, why is that?
What you lose is.
Which probably.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, this is. But you got to tell. You know, it interests me that. I was wanting to visit the kids. I mean. I think two thousand. I'm ready. Almost. But it's. That's what I'm saying. Yes, girl. I like you. What have you done? What have I seen? That's what I think.
Oh, yeah.
It's a very.
Yeah. Right January. The region. So. Without. I'm in.
I'm. Not when you.
Oh.
It's not. It's not. I'm like. I'm totally. I'm. So that's. What she has. I'm. I'm like. Probably. Well, we can.
I'm actually.
All right.
Just.
If we understand. Awesome. I thought you.
I'm trying to. I'm listening. I'm listening.
I'm not sure.
Yeah.
I'm.
She was.
Start.
That's a revelation. I think you.
I'm. But. I wish I could have. I was. I think. (coughs). I don't. I'm. Don't ask. They're so. Okay.
Who's.
So.
You might.
I'm. If you have three.
One.
Oh, yeah. Well, she she. I'm out. Yeah, it was. I basically. They cry at my last name. She told me she was. It was all you. It was in the world. That's a win. I'm. I'm. Every day. I go with something. I'm even. What is on the way? That's what I'm. I'm cool. I'm. No, maybe. All the. It's even more. I get it. I'm tired. Yeah.
You know. That's nice.
I saw. Everyone.
That was something. To.
I'm. Brother. All.
That's what I did. Ever.
Well, that's why we never had a scene like that.
So.
Oh, that's.
But you're.
Those. I can. Or something else.
I mean.
Oh, this. I was. I'm.
Just.
I'm. I was. I was more. Maybe I'll. You're. Tell me. No. I'm. Yeah, I'm.
I'm. Okay.
I'll be here for a while.
What's that? That's.
We don't. You're such. You don't want.
I don't.
Does. That's only.
Oh, yeah.
I'm sure it is. It is.
My.
Totally.
Really?
And. It's calm. What would you call it? That's. I'm. I think. Great. I'm sure it's. It's like. I love to use. I'm. I'm sorry. That's your mom. Okay. All the. I have to let you on. That's. I'm. But I should. Like. I'd be happy for. And. I'm. 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 That's. Yeah. I got.
Oh.
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah. I'm. Is it really? I can't.
That's a nice.
I was. Where is that? That.
That's why. Thank you. I'm.
Okay. That was.
That was.
Also.
Don't.
I would.
Even. Listen.
I'm. I'm. Don't. Oh, what do you think? I was watching that. What did you? Oh, yeah. I don't. I think. Some. Please. Come on. All four of you. And then. Okay. I'm. I'm. I think.
I'm.
Yes. I don't. No. I don't. Every twenty five percent. I'm. I'm. But that was. I don't. I think. Once. I don't. You know. I think. They will. It's all. I say. I'll be down. I don't know. I listen. I don't. And I don't.
Oh, yeah.
Those. I'm. I'm. Down. I don't. Yes, sir. Turn. Of our. I mean.
Although. Tom.
No. Marlon. Oh, this. That's. I'm. I think. That's. Oh, yeah. All the. You have a. Nation. The. I'm. 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 I think. I think. I'm. I'm. That's. I think. You're. But. It was. It's an extra. Without. It was. That's. But. I'm. You know. I'm. 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 I think. I don't. Who's. That. You're. Over. That's what they said. I can. Oh, that's. We have all the. I'm. I'm. There's. I'm. I'm. Okay. That's. All right. I'm.
All right. Yeah.
I was. But. I'm. I was. I was. Oh, that's. I'm. I'm. That's. So. You're. Oh. All. No, that's just. The. Oh. I tried. I just want to. I mean. But. That's. So. That's. I'm. That's. That's. I'm. That's. That's. There. All. I'm. She's. I'm. I'm. Oh, okay. That's. That's. Well, now. I'm. That's. But you're. You. Yeah. Mark. Okay. Oh, shit. Yeah.
Hey, are we good?
Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the meeting of the City Council for Tuesday, February sixth, two thousand twenty-four. This meeting will be conducted in person in the Sanford City Council chambers and via remote video and teleconference pursuant to one M R S A section four oh three B two D and section six of the Sanford City Council rules of procedure as amended and adopted June sixth, two thousand twenty-three. Members of the public may join the meeting via by phone by dialing one nine two nine two zero five six zero nine nine using meeting ID eight five nine five two seven zero one eight five one and password one eight two two one six or via computer at the website provided on our website. Members of the public may also submit comments via the city of Sanford website at W W W dot Sanford main dot org. Under Government, City Council, Contact the Council. Could we all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We can now, we will now have a moment of silence. The roll call, I'm Deputy Mayor Moore Hurley. I'm taking over for the mayor this evening who was unable to be here. Uh, we are also joined online by Council Tranche Monteng, who has a very bad cold, and we all told him to stay home and join us this way because we do not want a cold. Council Stackpole.
Present.
Council Handsomen.
Present.
Council Martel.
Present.
Council Hitchcock.
Present.
And we also join this evening by City Manager Steve Buck and his assistant Larissa Ricketts. Uh, first, I wanted to start to let us know that our reporter this evening, um, is the daughter of someone who was the baby of the kids that I went to school with. And I believe her name is Renee, Renee Moran. She is a senior at Sanford High School, and she is covering this meeting as a member of the Sanford Springvale News. Not Sanford High School, I'm sorry. Here, she's a senior, but she's covering it as a member of the Sanford Springvale News. So welcome this evening, and, um, hopefully you'll get all of our information down correctly. Before we start the meeting, I wanted to let everybody know there is no ordinance tonight on our agenda for the flavored tobacco. We are discussing the flavored tobacco as a city council, but there is no ordinance, so there is no public hearing for an ordinance. We are discussing the flavored tobacco as a city council, but there is no ordinance, so there is no public hearing for an ordinance. If you would like to say a few words about how you feel about such an ordinance being discussed, please sign up on the sheet there. You will do so during public participation. When we get to the agenda item, the discussion will only be had by the city council because it is a discussion. So if you do want to say a few words, but if, if we go forward with the ordinance, there will be a thirty-day warning for the public hearing at which we would be able to have people who are for or against come and speak. Because there was no posted public hearing, I, you know, you should do it during public comment, okay? So if you do want to speak in general during public comment, please sign up on the sheet on the table. Okay. Minutes twenty-four dash six three dash zero one, order to approve the minutes from the regular city council meeting held on January sixteenth, two thousand twenty-four. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Council Hitchcock, Council Hanselman.
I'll second that.
Any questions or concerns? All those in favor? Council Tranche Monteng?
I'm in favor.
Thank you. You be verbal tonight so that we make sure to have it on the record.
You got it.
Thank you. Twenty-four, that was all of us, six to zero. Twenty-four dash six four dash zero one, order to approve the minutes from the executive session of the city council held on January sixteenth, two thousand twenty-four. Could I have a motion, please? Council Hanselman?
So moved, uh, Deputy Mayor.
Council Hitchcock, you had your.
I'll second.
Thank you. Any questions or concerns? All those in favor? Council Tranche Monteng?
I'm in favor.
Thank you. Twenty-four dash six five dash zero one, order to approve the minutes from the executive session of the city council held on January twenty-third, two thousand twenty-four. Could I have a motion, please? Council Martel?
Motion to accept.
Thank you. Council Stackpole?
Second.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor? Thank you.
I'm in favor.
Thank you. Uh, I have no mayor's report this evening. Um, and the real mayor is really not here, so. Uh, could I have the city manager's report? I know he has something.
I do. Uh, I'm gonna be as brief as physically possible with these because there's a lot of information in here. Uh, the first element I wanted to convey is, uh, our, our work with the main department of transportation, they've released their three-year work plan. Uh, just a quick re, uh, review of, of what that is. Uh, they have programmed a municipal partnership initiative, an MPI, for High Street for twenty twenty-five in the amount of six hundred and twenty-five thousand. Uh, we continue to work on the share of the Raze Grant, um, finishing the engineering on that, their commitment to the construction in that, that's gonna be doing all of the entire downtown streets. Uh, we have an MPI to finish in this, this, uh, spring on River Street, for which the state will pay six hundred and twenty-five thousand towards that. Uh, we have the Route Four and School Street signalization, it's in progress. Everything has been done except for we're waiting for the delivery of the overhead light to be there. Uh, that will become a four-way signalized intersection. Uh, this has been in work for two years, but this year we get to implement the pedestrian heads-up, so all of our crosswalks are gonna be redone in the city, be restripped. There'll be signage, uh, new signage that's there, uh, and such, and that's being paid for with federal dollars. We have the replacement of most of the city's traffic signals in two thousand twenty-four, and I'll give you a list of all thirteen of those in just a moment. We have the Shaw's Ridge Road, a light capital paving, uh, this coming season. Oak Street receiving a light capital paving this coming season. They're gonna replace a large culvert out on Route two oh two on Lebanon, that's the headwa, head, headwaters to the, uh, Great Works Stream, uh, that's out there. Uh, the Powers Bridge, that's under design right now on Route Four, uh, that's scheduled to be replaced in two thousand twenty-five. That is, a deficient bridge is too narrow. Uh, so they're gonna, huh, what? On Route, Route Four, uh, the Malsum River.
Okay.
Yeah, the Powers Bridge, yeah, so that has to be replaced. Uh, and we have a signalization slated for two thousand twenty-five. We asked for this when the high school was built, but they're gonna, they're funding the signalization of the Route Four, Jagger Mill, and Alumni Drive intersection. That's, that's a right out only now, right when school lets out and such and to that because of the dangerousness of, of that intersection. Uh, so the School Street Light, as well as the, uh, Route Four Jagger Mill Light, will be, uh, MDOT is running fiber optics from the traffic circle out to Route Four to connect those two lights because we have Sanford Net Fiber everywhere else. So that will give us fifteen lights, it'll be all interconnected using the Sanford Net Fiber, uh, central server here and a central server in Augusta for, uh, real, real-time adjustments to the traffic lights, uh, the first of its kind in the state of Maine. And then for two thousand twenty-six, there's a mill and fill of Route two oh two and Winter Street. So that's picking that up outside of the scope of the Raze Grant and/or River Street project, uh, and, uh, moving that forward to the intersection with, uh, Main Street. Quickly referencing, there's other significant sums of money. You can see the York County Community Action has a series of, of, uh, public transportation funds in there for two hundred and thirty-five thousand this year, one point six million dollars this year, one point eight million dollars this year under various categories, uh, similar sums of money coming for in twenty-five and twenty-six. Uh, in there for two thousand twenty-six is four hundred and ninety-four thousand, I'm sorry, it should be four hundred and ninety-four thousand dollars for the, for the airport. MDOT's contributions towards, uh, runway taxiway reconstruction work, um, seven hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars in two thousand twenty-six towards the same. And, and a future upgrade to the terminal building in the amount of nine hundred thousand dollars in there. So I commend, uh, Allison Navia, our airport manager. She's extremely aggressive, uh, going for those funding sources, uh, through the fed, federal government and then through our main department of transportation. In the final amount, it's two hundred and eighteen thousand dollars to continue the airport layout plan. She's just finishing a business master plan under similar funding as before. Uh, and to, to the reporters, you don't have to write so furiously, we'll, we'll forward all of this to you. Okay, thank you. All right. Traffic lights, as I referenced, the thirteen lights that were in there, not counting the two on Route Four. Uh, we have one oh nine, uh, by Walmart. We have the, the Jagger Mill Light, we have the Shaw's Ridge Light, uh, the light at Westview, uh, the Alumni and Old Mill, uh, Emery Street, Washington Street, uh, the Route, uh, Main Street, eleven and four A and eleven A and two twenty-four, Carter Street and River, Grammar at New Dam, uh, the River Street Light and the Carter Street Lights. So all of those lights, this, this stems from a build grant. So there used to be Tiger Grants, and then there were Build Grants. The Build Grant is the first one that we, um, cooperated with MDOT when we used to compete with the main department of transportation for Tiger Grants, the federal money. Uh, we couldn't get a lot of support from MDOT because we were competing against them. We weren't successful in getting Tiger Grants. We, this was our first successful, um, joint venture with, with MDOT on a build grant that's paying for these traffic light improvements, uh, everywhere in the city. And then from there, we, we did a PPI, then did, uh, developed the Village Partnership Initiative that got twenty-five million dollars of federal funds and an additional ten million from, uh, DOT for our downtown project. So Planning Partnership Initiative, I have a draft in hand. It's, it will be the second, uh, PPI that we would like to submit to the main department of transportation. Once we get that fully vetted for amendments administratively, we'll forward that to the city council for your review and hopefully your, your, uh, authorization to send that forward. Uh, this, uh, Planning Partnership Initiative, let me back up. Our first PPI Planning Partnership Initiative became main department of transportation's first ever VPI Village Partnership Initiative. That got us the Raze Grant at the federal level. And now propagating that statewide as the model of success, uh, and trying to get more federal dollars in here using that VPI. So we're now getting ready to submit our second Planning Partnership Initiative that will cover the south portion of Sanford. So the, the, uh, all of the landmass around the, um, the roundabout, Route Four, Country Club, uh, and Route Four, the Alfred Road, and all of those properties, all the way, um, westerly to Westview Drive and Patriots Lane, um, and further south, uh, down Country Club Road and continuing, uh, down to the Walmart area. So we've completed the big master plan, uh, with a PPI for our downtown, and now we want to take that success and our partnership with MDOT and translate that to the southern portion of Sanford around that, that area. So if you read through that, uh, there was a lot of, uh, incredible language in there about the economic development that's happening in there and how this fosters that. One of the main, um, deficiencies of, of the roundabout is you can't get pedestrians through there. It's extremely difficult for bicyclists, walkers, and such and to that. The development is there now, I mean, there's thirty-six new units where the Boutique Hotel is going to be. TBD has put thirty-six new units in there. The walkability isn't there for the roundabout, so we don't have the type of resources to fix that on our own. The PPI will allow us to partner and do MPIs and/or other federal funding, such as a Raze Grant, towards those improvements as well. Uh, very quickly, legislative actions that I want you to be aware of. Uh, LD four forty-four is an act to designate first responders and other public safety professionals as a special risk population. Uh, this is, um, very positive for us. We, we, we're putting a lot more counseling and efforts into pre-assessing and preventing TP, uh, to, uh, PTSD, sorry. Uh, this would, if, if passed for the first time, our healthcare insurance would have to pick up that pre-review medically that they don't pay for now, that we're paying out of pocket for, uh, so that would be a great assistance to us. Uh, LD eleven fifty-three is an act to allow municipalities to tax personal solar energy equipment under five megawatts. This is the community solar that flooded the market because they got a fifty percent tax exemption that was not supposed to be there. It was a slip-up in the law. Uh, our representative, well, he's outside of our district, but Representative David Woodson, he's the co-sponsor on that bill. He's a co-chair of the Energy Utilities and Technology. He's been trying to fix that for a number of years, so hopefully this fixes it, uh, and, and if it does, uh, that fifty percent exemption goes away. Uh, LD twenty-one oh six is an act to accelerate the production of affordable housing and strengthen the historic property rehab, rehabilitation tax credit. There's very positive, uh, amendments in there and a significant increase in the amount of historic tax credits that will be put out there. That is significant for us for our mill redevelopment. Our mill re, redevelopment hinges upon, this is one of the significant leveraged funding, uh, sources for those redevelopments. LD six forty-six, uh, so we know, uh, there was legislation passed a year ago that provided a, um, a freezing of property valuations, uh, for now just a one-year period, um, for people over six, the age sixty-five. The state estimated when they put that program in place, the fiscal impact statement was fifteen million. We know that it's now upwards of twenty-six point five million. So they're applying, uh, there, there, there's a bill in there to put another fifteen million dollars in there, uh, because they believe it's gonna be closer to thirty million dollars for them to pay off that liability, and then the state's out of that, that business. Uh, and the last element I'll report out on is solid waste. Uh, so the city of, of Sanford, um, we're part of what's a fourteen-town group on solid waste. When Merck was, uh, bought by, when, when Merck went out of business, our, our solid waste used to go to Merck in Bedford. Casella bought them out, uh, no, well, it was about thirteen years ago is when I first started here. Um, we had, we energized that fourteen-town group, uh, to negotiate with Casella for the closeout of that Merck contract that ends, uh, June thirty-first of twenty, uh, twenty-five. So we have until, uh, next, a year from this, June, to find another source of our solid waste disposal. So we've entered into negotiations with Casella. They gave us a tentative proposal that we turned back and said, you need to do better than that. So they're gonna come back with a revised proposal on that. We spent the majority of the day last Thursday at EcoMaine. Uh, our recyclables go to EcoMaine single sort now. We've asked them as a group to give us a proposal on both our recyclables and our solid waste. Uh, and then the third entity that we'll be working with is Turnkey out of Rochester. So we're gonna get proposals from all three of those large firms for a long term, and in the industry now, long term is five-year contract. Uh, there's much change in the industry. Uh, I was very pleased with the presentation at E, at EcoMaine. They have a twenty-five-year-old single sort facility that was really set up to sort out newspapers because that was the bulk of the recyclables when that facility was built. When you look at the waste stream there now, there's hardly a newsprint in there at all. So that integrated line is highly dependent upon, they, they have nearly twenty people that are hand sorting and picking on that, that line. It's very integrated technology, there's, there's one automated, uh, unit in the entire place. They're looking at investing twenty-six million dollars in a state-of-the-art, single-sort recycling facility for which we would have the opportunity to enter into as a first-time, um, owner or, uh, of that. So they're going to put a proposal together for us that I would believe will be highly competitive with Casella. I have less information as to the competitiveness with Turnkey yet, although, uh, we reasonably believe that Turnkey and Rochester's long-term, um, viability is in question as far as capacity perspective. And that's all I had under the manager's report.
Do you want to segue right into the homeless report? Because you had your meeting this morning, correct?
Uh, yes, yesterday.
Yesterday.
Yesterday morning. Um, so as quickly as I can on the homeless task force, usually this is a much larger presentation, but I, I will not be doing that tonight. Really, the, uh, Monday's meeting, the task force had not met for, for a month. Uh, two reasons, holiday schedule, just the way the schedules fell, everybody's working on budgets, we couldn't commit the time. But our service providers, our community partners, York County Community Action Pathways, um, York County Shelter Program, Sanford Housing, they continued to meet during that time period with a focus on coordinated entry and coordinated case management in preparation for what we, um, call a warm handoff by our mental health unit. So the police department's mental health unit was initially established to address, uh, mental health, uh, calls and recidivism within our community, addressed it at the source so it doesn't become a larger issue. They then morphed into quickly trying to, uh, work on the preventative side of people becoming homeless because of circumstances that they have out of their control, uh, beyond economics, and then were, were forced, were pushed into dealing with the, the extensive number of unhoused people that we have in our community. The four-person assignment, but essentially it's, it's two and a half, uh, we're back to three and a half now. And the MHU became overwhelmed with that, so that the, our local regional service partnering service providers have, uh, been working to coordinate, for coordinated case management and entry so that we can hand them off. So when our MHU makes contact with an individual, they can hand them to our service providers for case management, for their mental health, their substance use disorder, uh, their, uh, housing and other medical needs and such and to that. I, I will say that our, our meeting today was productive in some areas, less productive in other areas. We held because some of our key officials were not there today, so we'll, we'll go back at that, uh, in a couple of weeks. Uh, I do give a lot of credit to our service providers. They each have a, a piece of a portion to work, to work on that they do. They're paid either state or federal dollars to do that, and other private, uh, foundation contributions as well. The difficulty is getting coordination amongst all of those moving parts and not having the ability to direct that directly. It's problematic for me.
Micromanage, every.
Yes, I don't get to. So we're playing well in the sandbox and we're getting a reasonable response, I'll put it that way. Um, the other large part of this is the, um, we had the December eleventh forum at the Performing Arts Center that was attended by about fifty percent of York County's legislators. Uh, it was, uh, specifically there to address homelessness in York County, what's changed over the last number of years because we've seen an exponential rise. Uh, we've gone from ten to a hundred and fifty-five in a three-year span that we're managing. Uh, from that, uh, we formed a group of about fourteen municipalities and service providers, uh, that have formed an advocacy group. City Council has, uh, signed onto those four key points of the advocacy group. I didn't put those in here today, but the two, first two pieces of legislation that we advocated for was first, uh, LD twenty-one thirty-six. That was a bill, um, sponsored by, uh, our representative Emery Mistrake as an emergency piece of legislation. Uh, and it seeks to put an additional ten million dollars, so in other words, fully fund the pre-existing shelters in our state that are currently only funded at about thirty percent currently. There's a number of those shelters looking to go out of business, uh, because they don't have the funding necessary to continue their operations. That bill would, would rectify that in a single year. So we submitted, I submitted testimony, I was selected to give the testimony on behalf of, of the advocacy group on that bill. Uh, at the same hearing, um, there was LD twenty-eighty-four Services for Victims of Crime. It also, uh, uh, created a pathway to better address financially victims of, of. It also created a pathway to better address financially victims of crime as it relates to homelessness. There was a third LD in here that we covered that particular day that provided a better funding mechanism, a formulation for low-barrier shelters. We didn't give testimony in that specifically, but many of the entities there that day, they took all three of these up, were giving positive testimony in all regards. So I won't, I won't read through this, but here's the testimony for the York County Committee on Homelessness in support of LD twenty-one thirty-six. The problem that I had was where I was signed up for two testimonies. They only gave me the slot to read one. So I read the task force work for all of York County. And in here is those communities and entities that are signed on to that work. And then I also submitted, it's in the public record, it's in their hands, testimony on behalf of the city of Sanford itself for support of that emergency shelter funding as sponsored by Representative Mistracca. But thank you.
Thank you, Steve. Does anybody have any questions on either the Homeless Task Force report or the manager's report? Yes, Jonathan?
Just a couple of quick things. Thank you for presenting testimony on those bills, Steve. I didn't see an update on the numbers of homeless. Is that a number that you have available? I know that's something.
Hundred and fifty-five.
Hundred and fifty-five? Thank you.
That's our last known number. A lot of where they are now, so the Lafayette Shelter, that's in my report. I didn't properly present on that. They have forty-two to forty-five zero-gravity beds. Those beds have been full over the last number of weeks. So they're getting good utilization. And on top of that population that's receiving meals and services there, there's been twenty to thirty, depending upon the day and the weather, also coming there for services and sheltering. So as per today's meeting, that is now our clearinghouse, so to speak. So the MHU can refer people to the shelter. The coordinated entry and case management starts there now. So they can go to the warming shelter. That will start the clearinghouse of the case management services and the assignment, regardless of who they've been working with in the past or may not have been working with. That's our current point of coordinated entry. I don't see that being that for the long term, but at the moment, that's the best that we have.
Thank you. Well, they're there anyway, getting services. So that's a great point of contact for them. So it sounds like it's working out. Thank you.
We had some success stories. A couple of individuals have gone to treatment for SUDs. Two people have moved from the warming shelter to the shelter in Alfred, which really elevates them as far as placement into home units and such under that. So we're starting to get some positive movement.
Excellent. Okay. Communications presentation, twenty-four dash seven-seven dash zero-one. Information on Super Tuesday Presidential Primary on March fifth, twenty twenty-four, Maine's first semi-open primary. And also discussing the new law effective February first, twenty twenty-four regarding ongoing absentee ballot requests for voters sixty-five and older or any age with a disability. And this evening we have our city clerk, Sue Cody. Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening. Deputy Mayor Hurlahey, members of the Sanford City Council and resident Sanford Springville here and on Zoom. I'm Sue Cody, your city clerk and registrar of voters. This year is a very busy year in the world of elections. And I have a lot of important information to share with you. First of all, I want to start off with the voting places for the upcoming March fifth primary. All three voting places that were utilized last November are the same voting places you will be using for this election. I had talked with a lot of people about consolidating. That didn't work, so status quo, three places. They're listed here on the voting information page of the city website. Polling hours on Election Day are seven in the morning to eight at night. Voter registration. The voter application has been updated to accommodate the recently qualified No Labels Party and the Libertarian Party, who just recently did voter registration drives and reached the threshold of enrollment they needed to remain as a qualifying party for this year. Unfortunately, some of the people that were soliciting registrations and enrollments in those two parties weren't forthcoming to people when they were approached. A lot of them may have, I don't know if I can shrink this down a little bit. This is a full-page of a voter registration card, front and backside. So a lot of these were presented to people maybe on a clipboard. They were misled to believe they were signing a petition to promote creation of a new party in Maine. And they did not make aware that they were actually registering and enrolling in that party. When the cards were turned in to me and other municipal clerks across the state, we processed them, we updated their party enrollments, we sent out voter notification notices. I put a special paragraph online. You have changed your party affiliation to No Labels or to the Libertarian Party, effective this date. You are now locked into that party for three months by state law. There's nothing we can do. Even though they felt they were misled, it's a legal paper, voter registration application, and it's been processed. And there are unfortunately some people that will be affected that come the March fifth primary. I did pull a report this afternoon. I currently have one hundred and thirty-five Libertarian Party people and one hundred and forty-one No Labels. So if you think you might have been involved in this, thinking you were signing a petition and weren't and actually enrolling, please call my office. We'll look up, verify what your party enrollment status is. We can see the date that the change was made effective. And if it was, I think, anytime after November fifteenth, you're locked in that other party for the March fifth primary, unfortunately. Good news about voter registration. The state is accepting preregistrations of sixteen-year-olds. Most sixteen-year-olds, as they go and get their driver's license, fill out a voter registration card there at the Bureau of Motor Vehicles. And they're preregistered to vote. When they turn eighteen, as long as they still reside at the address that they registered at, they become an active voter and will be able to vote. Kind of exciting. Also, still living with mom and dad or away at college, but using mom and dad's address as their base. Seventeen-year-olds, I should make a shout-out to the high school people. If you are seventeen years old now, will be eighteen on or before November fifth, you can vote in the presidential primary on March fifth and the state primary on June eleventh. How exciting is that? Also, if you are preregistered to vote, you can work at, or volunteer and help at a voting place if you want to kind of get an inside view of how things go. Another new item for voter registration. This is my election and voter information page of the website. Just starting February first, the Secretary of State launched online voter registration. I do have the link posted here on that page of my website. This will redirect you to the Secretary of State site where you can complete your registration card online. If you're having difficulty, you don't have the information, your proof of residency, license information in front of you, you can do the old-fashioned way, print out a paper card or come into the office and we'll get you registered. Absentee voting is going on now for the March fifth primary. Excuse me. Those requests can be made as always, online, calling the office or submitting a paper application. What's different is because of the open, semi-open primaries, you now have the option, if you are an unenrolled voter, not Green Independent, not Libertarian, but unenrolled, you have a choice to participate in one of the parties that have a ballot for the March fifth primary. Excuse me. You just need to check the box on the paper application. Or if you're doing your request online, there is a box for you to check and make that request as well. If you are already enrolled as a Democrat or a Republican, you will, unless you change before February fifteenth, you will be stuck or have to vote that party ballot come March fifth. New again, application for ongoing absentee ballot status. This is something a lot of people have questioned for many years now. How come I have to call every time I want a ballot? Can't you just put me on a list and send it to me automatically? Now you can. Once you fill out this application, you do have to qualify, either being sixty-five years or older by the next election or be any age and have a disability. The voter must fill this application out and sign it and submit it to the city clerk's office. It's not a request that we can take over the phone like we do for your regular ballot on Election Day. It is posted on the website also. I have that on the, on the same election and voter information page. The absentee ballot request for the regular absentee ballot. And then below that is the ongoing request you can print out there. I did include with that posting on the website, there's just a little brief cover letter, if you will, explaining how that works. If you're unenrolled, make sure you check the box for a party that you might want for a primary election. So if you're filling this out now, you've checked for Democrat or Republican, you're locked into that for as long as your application remains active. Excuse me. If you decide maybe you want a Republican ballot for March, but want to do a Democrat ballot in June as an unenrolled voter, you would have to resubmit a new application before the election. And if you want to make that change, you can just simply call and we can mail you a new application. I do have some hard copies printed out. I can leave them in the back of the room. I don't know if you want to bring some to your office and have it for your residence. Is there any other, any questions on all that information?
I think you've hit the highlights and you're open for absentee ballot?
We are doing absentee voting now in the city clerk's office.
And this is the presidential primary in March? So it's not state election? That's June?
No, June eleventh will be the state primary.
So that's our representatives and senators for the moment? Because there's no gubernatorial this year.
No, that was two years ago.
Okay. So is everybody, okay. Wonderful. Thank you. Excellent presentation.
Thank you.
The next item, twenty-four dash seven dash zero-one. The presentation of the annual report from the Sanford Arts Commission is being postponed until February twentieth. She was unable to make it this evening. Twenty-three dash eight-four dash zero-one. Presentation of the annual report from the Sanford Trails Committee. And tonight we have with us Mr. Lawrence Fergish. Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you.
'Tis the season for annual reports. Sorry.
Okay, so I hope you all have a copy of my written report because I'm not going to go through and read it all. I'm going to summarize the, you know, what I think are the main points. But there's some important stuff in it. I highlight the members of the committee, which deserve to be highlighted. They've done a great job on our trails. Put in almost six hundred hours of volunteer time this year working on the trails and so forth. And there's also about fifteen short projects. They're short, but they're equally important in terms of having the trails be friendly and accessible and good for users. So I hope you'll take a look at those. And there will be a quiz at the end of this presentation. When I'm on the trails, I often have my dogs. So we'll see who can tell me how many slides have pictures of dogs in them. Clearly, the most important thing that happened this year was the removal of ATVs from the rail trail. And the work done by Stewart and Tornow on the rail trail from Hanson's Ridge Road to Main Street. The Trails Committee decided to use a significant amount of its funds to do that. We felt the rail trail is the most important trail, the most used trail, and that's the most used section. So that work was done. It came out beautifully. We're really happy with that. And as a result, we've noticed a significant increase in the use. Every time you go by the trailhead on Hanson's Ridge, there are a bunch of cars parked there. And when I'm on the trail, I see a lot of walkers and bikers. We very much appreciate your vote to make the rail trail a city park and to adopt some regulations on its use. But more remains to be done. For one thing, we're in the process of doing some gate modifications to try to keep people that use ATVs and either don't know about the, that they're not supposed to be on or choose to ignore it, to try to keep them off, but still allow access. We're having some of these built and they will be installed sometime in the spring. And the other thing is the section from Hanson's Ridge to Lebanon is the next section that really needs work. And it's going to be a little more expensive and more work than what we did before. This was taken in the winter, but I think you can see, first of all, if you look on each side of the trail, you can see it's higher than the middle. The trail is really supposed to be crowned to take the water off and so forth. And also, each of those dark spots you see are areas where the ATVs have thrown up gravel and made an indentation. So there's going to be a significant amount of grading and adding new gravel and compacting to fix this section of trail the way the other section was fixed. I'm sorry, the mayor's not here because I wanted to thank her and Rick Stanley because we recently received a fifteen-thousand-dollar grant from the William Oscar Emery Fund to use toward our work on the rail trail. Exceedingly grateful for that.
I suspect she'll be quietly snooping later, so she'll hear it.
I'm sorry?
I suspect she'll be quietly snooping later and checking out the video.
Well, I'm sure the work won't start until the spring. It won't happen right now, anyway. But one of the other issues have been beaver activity around Deering Pond. Several years ago, we had a beaver deceiver installed at the outlet to the pond, which is a little way up the Hazen Carpenter Trail. The idea was to keep the beavers from making dams. The problem was that the way it was installed, it ended up raising the total level of the pond. And that meant that the wetland that's down along the edges of the rail trail got wetter. And that was an area where we'd had problems in the past. We've had flooding there. We had installed a culvert and raised the gravel level to deal with that. We consulted a wildlife biologist from the Department of Inland Fish, Bees and Wildlife. He came out and looked, and he advocated that we get another beaver deceiver installed at the outlet. We contracted with a man named Eric Thorpe, who's a licensed animal control person. He put a new deceiver in in the fall. Despite all the rain, it seems to be working very, very well. But the water level is still up. It still threatens the trail at times. And those beavers are just incredibly active little creatures. So it's just something that we're going to have to keep on top of. The high school loop trail was a recreational trail, an RTP grant. Went out to bid, Stewart and Torno did a great job. It created two legs between the Moussum River Bike Path, which you see going right along the river, and the road in front of the high school. So it increases the opportunity for walkers and bicyclists. And also, I think the cross-country team gets an additional chance to run down there. That grant is almost ready to be closed out, but we're working with the Sanford Regional Technical Center and Adam Hartford to alter the physical gates that keep cars out of the high school. We want to keep the gates. We know it's important to keep the cars out, but we want to make it a little more welcoming to walkers and bicyclists. And so they've come up with a plan and we hope to have that done soon because we really want to get that grant closed out so that we can apply for more rail trail funding from that same grant program. This is the trailhead at William Oscar Emery, the kiosk. Lee Burnett's been heavily involved in updating this. It's to celebrate the different kinds of trees and wood that are important to New England. We cleared a lot of brush. Here's a great picture of some volunteers from Great Bay Services spreading gravel there. That's going to be really important going forward when the full loop around number one pond is completed and so forth. I'm sorry?
Between the tar and the gravel, there's like this bump.
We're still not done spreading gravel. We got some out before the snow came, but there were still plans to get more out. So we still have more to go in there. This really exciting slide is thanks to Public Works, Pete Smith. We had some serious washouts in a section of our trail near the junior high, and they came up with a way of diverting the water and so forth. And so Matt Hill and Pete Smith are great and they're really very, very helpful to us.
Is that where the back road kept washing? The trail that comes from the back road towards Goen?
If you're driving in Spartan Drive, it's the one that goes down.
Yes, okay, thank you.
It's steep, and so keeping...
It kept washing out, right?
Yeah, it washed out several times last year. We think this will try to deal with it. We also removed a lot of brush at a couple of the trailheads. This is on Emery Street, and this is at the end of Pioneer Avenue. Those are well-used areas, but you get a lot of invasive species and brush that have to be cleared out. One of our members loves to pick up trash. And when I asked for pictures, he sent me 13 pictures of different trash things that he'd picked up. So here's just a few. I'll give you an idea of... That's an ongoing thing.
Your Deering Pond is, I've seen that.
Yeah.
Oh, wasn't mine, no. A bag hanging from a tree with a bunch of cans, though. It's kind of funny.
So we'll end with a nice picture. This shot is taken on the Moussum River Bike Path between Breton Avenue and the high school. I want to thank all of you, City Manager Steve Buck and Brady Lloyd. Brady Lloyd is just so valuable to the Trails Committee. We're very grateful. I'll be glad to entertain any questions and we'll see who knows how many dog pictures there were.
I stopped counting, I'm sorry. Anybody else keep up the count? It's like four?
Four, four.
Good. Later pictures didn't have them, then.
I did note that it was all flushing dogs, no pointers.
That's all I had.
And not ranging well. They're a bit out of shotgun range. So I have to politely tease you on that.
No, the trails look great. They really look nice.
Well, I think they're a tremendous asset to the city and they're so much fun to be out on any time of year.
Thank you. Any other, any questions?
I was just going to comment that I do have a cross-country runner, and she loved the new expanded trail at the high school. And we got a lot of great feedback from the meet that we hosted that folks were just really pleased with that course. So thank you for that piece.
Good, it's good to hear. Well, thank you all very much.
Thank you, Lawrence. Okay, last presentation of the evening. 24-69-01, the quarterly report and presentation from the Director of the Sanford Regional Economic Growth Council. Welcome, Mr. McBride. This is Keith McBride, our Economic Development Director.
Good evening. Let me see if I can pull this up right here. Yeah. That's good enough for me. Well, thank you very much. Keith McBride, Director of your Growth Council. I will do my best to try to keep this brief. I do have a lot to cover, though. So typically, I like to jump into these with kind of a macroeconomic look at some things that are going on. I'm going to shorten this section of it. A year ago, all the talk was about recession and whether or not we would see recession in 2023. And the other option would be this magical soft landing. And the loose definition of a soft landing is the market correction of high inflation and other factors that tend to indicate the oncoming of recession without actually hitting the pit of a recession. So thus, the kind of soft landing that you'd like to get. And the outlook lately has been a lot rosier than it was a year ago and whether or not we're achieving that soft landing. Looking up just some quick metrics on that, and I'll share some things. A year ago, a lot of economists and pundits were predicting a 0% growth in GDP for 2023. And we far exceeded that. What I'm seeing is that for the year, real GDP grew by 3.3%. Typically, a modest growth is like 1.5% to 2%. So we've exceeded even what would be considered modest GDP growth. So 2023 saw a much better economic performance, including 4.9% GDP growth in the third quarter of the year. So that's a far better economic performance than on a larger national level than a lot was projected. There's the sense that interest rates have peaked, but there's still no indication from the Fed that they're going to lower anything. So everyone's still in a holding pattern on that until we get more guidance. But that is the sense that we've seen the peak of interest rates. There are a lot of other factors that are causing some caution, especially in the banking industry. But as of yet, so far, it's certainly a lot rosier picture coming from economists about whether or not we're headed towards recession than it was just a year ago. Tipping into more local matters, I really wanted to spend some time with you, and I think I talked about this in November, that about our year in review, in December, we presented to our Board of Directors a year in review, looking at our strategic goals and our kind of high-level work plan, what we wanted to accomplish in the year 2023, and listing in detail everything we did over the course of the year to try to achieve some of those goals. I would love to read that entire document to you. We certainly don't have time for that. So instead, I thought I would focus on the incorporation of this council's goals, which were presented in early 2023. We took those that involved the Growth Council and we incorporated them into our goals. I thought I would report back to you on how we did. So I have the four of them listed here. Hearing from developers, investors and businesses and understanding Sanford-specific challenges to investors, developers and new businesses. We held three specific roundtables targeted at some of the biggest sectors in town. We had an industrial and manufacturing roundtable over in the industrial park early in the year. We had one dedicated towards real estate and development towards the middle of the year. And then towards the end of the year, in November, we held one cosponsored with the Friends of Downtown that was directed more towards small businesses. We took a lot of feedback on what's great about Sanford. Why are you here? What are the advantages you find because you're located in Sanford? Or in the case of the real estate community, if you're trying to market Sanford, what are the things that people are saying, "I'm really interested in exploring Sanford because of this advantage"? And on the flip side, what are the things that you find are a barrier, are an obstacle? What are the things that were difficult for you? And we took a ton of feedback. So I think covering the industrial side, we get a lot of larger manufacturers. The real estate side, many of them are commercial brokers and things that are from outside of our community, but they're trying to market opportunities that exist here. So they bring a totally different perspective. And then, of course, the small businesses that are here, many of whom are also residents. All of them kind of answering the same exact question. It gave us a really wide swath of feedback to explore on that. We also used our, we had a goal of ours was to engage in a pretty aggressive business visitation schedule for the year. And we used those opportunities to ask similar questions to a lot of our local businesses and understand what their challenges are, what their opportunities are, what they see as advantages and what they see as things they needed help with. And a lot of that guided a lot of our activities for the year. And we also met specifically one-on-one with a lot of commercial real estate brokerage. Typically, those are some of the best assets for getting opportunities that exist here out to a broader audience. If there are people looking for, whether it's commercial space or industrial land to develop or whatever case that might be. They may not be close enough here, but commercial real estate brokers tend to have a larger marketing budget than we certainly do and a much broader reach, and they're in the know. So reaching out to them and, A, talking to them about what opportunities are here and B, hearing their feedback about what their potential clients are telling them about Sanford and Springville was another really interesting and eye-opening experience for us. And honestly, just through the general course of business assistance, we work with a lot of businesses as they go through the process of locating a business here or starting a new business or trying to explore development opportunities and go through planning and codes and all that stuff. As we work with people and kind of guide them through that process, we hear an awful lot of feedback and we see an awful lot of really great success stories. And we see an awful lot of things where we go, "Hmm, that was difficult to get through." And we take all of that feedback into the process as well. So we spent a lot of time working specifically on that question this year. We're proud in a lot of the work we've done trying to gather feedback and hear what some of those issues are. The second one, supporting Friends of Downtown and Heart and Soul efforts. I really have to hand this to Mary Hastings, our small business advocate. She is the leader and the driver of this as far as the Growth Council goes. As I think you know, we've talked about this enough. The Friends of Downtown are largely a volunteer group. Not largely, they are a volunteer group. Mary's role in that is really to be the coordinator, doing outreach, doing a lot of the administrative tasks for the group and just making sure that the volunteer activity has direction. It's an invaluable role, and I think that they've expressed a lot of thanks to her specifically for her efforts in that regard. But we've also worked hand-in-hand with them on some other issues. That meeting we held in November to talk to small businesses was co-hosted with them. It served our purposes because we were trying to get the word out to small businesses about an Economic Recovery Hub Grant opportunity, which I'll touch on in a moment. And it served the Friends of Downtown, the Heart and Soul Effort, because they were undertaking story gathering, which they were using for theirs. And also, I think they've talked about, the city has been interested in incorporating into their comprehensive plan process, hearing feedback from small businesses in the community and residents as well about, "What do you like about Sanford? Tell us your story. Why are you here? When did you get here?" And just going through the whole thing. I've seen some of the feedback they've gathered through that process, and it's fascinating. So we've partnered with them on that. And there was some funding that was coming to the Growth Council for their efforts of getting the promotion of that grant out. And because Friends of Downtown did a lot of the heavy lift, specifically with regard to that meeting, we've agreed to share some of those funds directly with the Friends of Downtown. So financially, we're trying to help support them as well as they continue in their efforts. So engaging in discussion with the City Council on downtown priorities. Box checked. In September, we had Councillor Tranchmontaine and Councillor Hurley, Deputy Mayor Hurley, in a workshop sort of discussion at a Growth Council meeting to talk about downtown priorities. Not going to do play-by-play on the whole discussion, but it was a great conversation. And I think we heard a lot from what the council is interested in and what they're hearing from constituents. And then I think our board shared a lot from the business side and from what we're seeing on the development side for downtown. Would love to continue that conversation and engage more of the council and more of the community on downtown and what the priorities ought to be and what the plan is and the vision going forward as well. But maybe that will take place in the coming year. And then the last one. Execute plan for community advertising and marketing that includes a campaign on why to stop shop and eat in Springville. Well, box not quite checked. We talked a lot about marketing this year, and we did engage in a conversation about this particular goal. And the direction that we got from that was, "Well, wait a minute, let's take a break. We'll hold off for a second. Let's figure out exactly what the message is we want to market about Sanford. What is it we're trying to say? What do we want to get out? And where is the target audience? And how are we going to reach that target audience?" So those are questions that we're still working on as a Growth Council this year. And we've talked a lot about the need for making marketing a greater priority. So moving on from that, I will then just show you this really quickly. This year, we took a different approach to our annual work plan and kind of did it on a very high-level thing. So these are, every bullet point on this list are the broader areas that we're generally working in and that we're called to work on behalf of the community through documents that establish the organization in partnership between the city and the IDC. So these are the 10 of them. Well, I added the 10th one, actually. There's nine of them. I added the 10th one, because I think we also have goals internally of things we want to do. So we asked the board to kind of give us their feedback on a high level, what types of things they'd like to see real gains made in 2024. And the three that I've bolded on this are the ones that emerged as sort of, "Let's see if we can really get some things done in that area." Doesn't mean that anything else in there is going to get left behind. It just means when the year comes to an end and they're evaluating how well we did, they're telling me that they're going to have a focus on those three things. So on the other hand, we're very excited for the possibility of seeing some new goals and a new plan come out of this economic development, market analysis and action plan matrix. One of our goals for 2023 was to have a broader economic development plan, maybe a multi-year plan, that incorporated some market analysis and data to say, "Where are we trying to go? What's the low-hanging fruit to get there? What's the highest priority things that we ought to be accomplishing?" The RFP for this plan went out through the Planning Department in December. There were responses received. There were discussions had. There is not yet a decision on a consultant to be hired, but we did meet with some excellent ones. So we're very excited about the potential for that. And I think that when this plan is completed, it is going to be extremely important to the Growth Council. And it's going to direct a lot of our activities for the 2024 and beyond. So I'm okay with our work plan being sort of high-level and focusing on those three larger bullet points because I think when we get that plan done, it's going to be very specific. So we'll get to the work on that plan when we get into it here. So as always, I like to take some time here and hit on some important local economic development activity, tell you some stuff that's happened. First of all, the Hub Grant Program that I referred to before, a huge success. There were awards made. There were awards made. There are seven Sanford-Springville businesses that received direct financial assistance. They did not reveal the amounts for obvious reasons, but those grants were for up to $20,000. Yeah, $20,000. Thank you. They were for up to $20,000. We don't know if every one of those seven businesses got that or not, they wouldn't let us know. But there were also another seven businesses that received free technical assistance through experts in things like marketing, social media marketing, website design, bookkeeping and accounting. So this is paid-for services for some, for seven businesses that are paid for through this grant for them. So that's 14 businesses in total in Sanford and Springville that were awarded that. And that's only the first round of awards. They will be doing a second round of grant coming up this spring. So more information on that to come. Secondly, the, the Jagger Mill property in Springville went on the market and very quickly went under contract. The buyer has not been announced, and so we obviously don't know the buyer, and we don't know if there's plans for that building, but that's a very significant property and a, a significant transaction that seems to be at least underway. No idea yet when it would actually close, but it is currently under contract. And I think everyone knows this already, I've heard so much talk about it, there's so much excitement, but the former Backstreet Grill property on School Street has been purchased by a restaurateur who has a successful restaurant in another community here in Maine, and he's going to be opening a Mexican restaurant at that location. It's very exciting. So we're looking forward to that. There are some issues not related to the, I think the property issues that we're holding up, the closing are out of the way, but there are some housing-related issues that are still in play, but I don't think that's going to necessarily hold up the, the opening of the restaurant might just delay it slightly. So we're hoping for a summer opening for the new restaurant at the former Backstreet site. So that's all I have for you tonight. I'm glad to entertain any questions on anything.
And hence why housing is so critical.
Yes. It's become the number one, and we talked about this as a board, it is the number one workforce development problem, is housing development. Very odd.
Yes, 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 discouraging. Do we have any questions here? Pete, anything?
I do not have any questions. Thank you, Keith, for working so hard. Appreciate you.
Thank you, councillor.
Okay, I think we're good. So we're moving on to public participation. We will pick up the paper, but I do know at the top of the paper was Mr. Jonathan Mapes. So do you want to start us off this evening? Just so you know, as Jonathan's coming to the podium, public participation is not a two-way dialogue, so just state what you came to talk about. We make notes, we hold those, that piece of information. I don't know what Jonathan's going to talk about, but if you are speaking about the proposed ordinance that we're still, just in the stages of discussing, there's lots of notifications for public hearings, and I think this will be mostly a full council discussion, so I think most of the discussion will occur here amongst seven rather than at a subcommittee. So, Mr. Mapes.
Well, thanks for having me. Deputy Mayor Hurley, councillors, Mr. Burke, Mr. Ricketts. My name is Jonathan Mapes from Springville. Yeah, I am here to say why are you even discussing a menthol ban? Don't you have better things to do? That should be an FDA, Congress, statewide initiative, not an anti-business. I, I don't smoke. I don't think any cigarettes are good for you. I'm not sure that menthol is any worse or better. You license more and more cannabis facilities, there are enough around this area? I just don't get it. Why menthol? I know there's a, there's a theme nationally.
It's a discussion of all flavors.
Menthol, okay, flavor ban, fine, okay. I said menthol, but I meant to say flavor ban.
It's the vaping issue.
What bothers me a little bit, to be a leader on something like this as a community, if indeed that's how you're thinking, then will every community around here eventually have a flavor ban? Every community around here? That's not around here. Chapley, Acton, Wells, Alfred, Lebanon? They fall into what? It's not a dialogue, I know, sorry. I don't agree with you. I also had a discussion a couple of years ago at a campaign fundraiser, had the opportunity to speak with New Hampshire's Governor Sununu, and he said, I love Maine. You continue to send your consumers to our state to buy things. So New Hampshire's not going to do it. Live free or die. So I have a lot of comments, but I, I cannot for the life of me understand why our city council would spend time on this topic. It truly is, it truly will hurt some local businesses. At least don't be first. Okay, then be like Portland. Fine, that, that, hell, I'll move to New Hampshire too, but this is ridiculous. Just please, please don't be, don't be first. Don't be at the end of the line for once. Thank you.
Alpesh Patel. And say your name if you want to come up, is he here? A-L-P-E-S-H Patel? No, did he, did he, did he leave? That's fine. I understand. Sanjay Patel? Okay. Farmik Kumar Patel? Farmik's not here? Okay. Kiraan Patel? Kiraan? K-I-R-A? No. Okay, the next two I cannot read. So anybody from here want to speak? Okay. We will, if you don't wish to speak this evening, we will make sure there's good, if we decide to have an ordinance that we're going to discuss, you'll get a public hearing notice 30 days in advance, okay? And I have, so anybody in the audience? Okay. Christopher Haywood. He's online, so let's give him a second. Did Christopher disappear? Not there? Okay. Being the only one this evening. Moving on, 24-50-01, a public hearing to receive comments in favor or against the renewal application submitted by RL2 LLC for an adult-use retail cannabis store license at 72 Emory Street, Unit 105 Sanford, Maine, and this is a renewal. Do I have anybody here to speak in favor? Do I have anybody here to speak against? Seeing none, I'll declare the public hearing closed. 24-61-01, this is a public hearing on an ordinance making administrative and process amendments to the marijuana license, license sections of the city code. And we're, we have here to describe the changes our Economic Community Development Director, Ian Howseal, and then we'll open the public hearing for, for and against.
Thank you. This makes changes to Chapter 149 and 161. These are administrative, there's no fee changes, just to run you through them quickly. I'm just going to refer to 149 and then 1, and then on like that. Removes the definitions because they're already covered under Chapter 161. Under four fees, it's moving from a category two to a category one. What that's doing is making administrative approval for those categories that are being moved. The exception is the, the retail of marijuana. That's staying with the city council approval and also requires a public hearing. We added a definition under 161, under two, for marijuana retail stores, and then addressed the enforcement provision, part of this administrative change to cover specifically marijuana retail stores. And then under 2232, these were, these incorporate the renewal period. So if you think about it, you, you receive these at certain times per year, and this is just making sure that this is codified properly for these activities and those, those approval periods that are currently carried out. And then also clarifying, as I already said, that the, the retail stores would stay with the city council approval and require a public hearing. I think on your agenda, you just did one just prior to, so that was a retail cannabis store, so that would stay with a public hearing. And then just a note here, I, I left just a couple words in here. We did review this internally, myself, Code Enforcement Officer, Planning Director Jamie, as well as Sukodi, City Clerk, and also Alex Hoare for permitting as well. So these are to capture how this is administered now, and again, there's no, there's no fee changes, but I would direct your, you know, as you consider the budget, the, the fees that are here, and $215,000 a year.
So this is, I'm just going to very quickly summarize. Every year when we got that list of renewals for the growers, if they're in good standing and it's a renewal, that will be approved at the codes enforcement level, at the staff level, just like liquor license. When you first come into the community, you get your new liquor license, but we don't have to approve it every year. It goes, they get looked at, they get reviewed, and the staff approves a renewal. As long as everything is going along well, it doesn't come to the city council. That's what would happen with the marijuana growing license, but we would still see the stores on an annual basis. Okay? Does everybody understand that? Okay. So if there's anybody in the audience here who would like to speak in favor of these changes? Anybody who would like to speak against these changes? And we have Diane Connolly. Are you to speak in favor or against, Diane?
Yes, good evening. Can you hear me?
I can.
My comment is, is not neither for or against. It's more of a clarification question. Is there a cap that the council has put on to how many retail marijuana stores we're going to have in town?
So the way the ordinance reads, Diane, is basically five. So there are eight growing sites, there are eight growing sites in our community. Five of them are in zones that allow for retail of any sort, and three are in zones that do not allow for retail. So the five that are in zones that allow for retail can have a retail store on the property.
So can we eventually have, let's say, 10 on Emory Street at 72 Emory? And that counts as one?
No, one per property.
All right. I thank you very much for the answer. Appreciate it.
You're welcome. Anybody else to speak in favor or against? Seeing none, I'll declare the public hearing closed. Consent agenda, is there any objection to the consent agenda? Seeing none, I'll declare it passed. Old Business, 24-57-01, these are all from the prior meeting. Confirm the findings in order of judging 27 Russian Street to be a dangerous building and a nuisance pursuant to 17 MRSA Sections 2851 to 2859. At the hearing held on September 19th, 2023...
That's a mistype, I apologize. And it's in each of them, Larissa pointed it out to me today, it's January 16th, thank you.
16th. At the hearing held on January 16th, 2024, and authorize the city manager to sign the findings in order for the city council and have the city clerk record it in the registry of deeds and advertise or serve it upon the owner and parties in interest as required by law. Do I have a motion?
So moved, Madam Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Hansman. Do I have a second?
Second, second motion.
Thank you. Any questions? All those in favor? Councillor Tranchmontaigne?
I am in favor.
Thank you. 24-58-01, confirm the findings in order of judging 58 Pleasant Street to be a dangerous building and a nuisance pursuant to 17 MRSA Sections 2851 to 2859. At the hearing held on January 16th, 2024, and authorize the city manager to sign the findings in order for the city council and have the city clerk record it in the registry of deeds and advertise or serve it upon the owner and parties in interest as required by law. Could I have a motion? Councillor Hitchcock?
So moved, Deputy Mayor.
Could I have a second, please? Councillor Stackpole? No, councillor Martell?
I'll second that.
Thank you. All those in favor? Councillor Tranchmontaigne?
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
On 58 Pleasant Street, did you get ahold of some of the heirs?
I have.
Okay, cool.
Yeah, and I think the hearing was effective from that perspective. I had two different heirs, very different family relationships there, and, and we talked about how speedily they could, they could address the roof so it doesn't cause any more damage inside and protect their grandmother's asset.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. And are you in favor? Councillor Tranchmontaigne?
Yes, I am.
Thank you. 24-59-01, confirm the findings in order of judging 102 Channel Lane to be a dangerous building and a nuisance pursuant to 17 MRSA Sections 2851 to 2859. At the hearing held on January 16th, 2024, and authorize the city manager to sign the findings in order for the city council and have the city clerk record it in the registry of deeds and advertise or serve it upon the owner and parties in interest as required by law. Could I have a motion?
So moved, Deputy Mayor.
Thank you. Could I have a second? Councillor Hitchcock?
Second.
Thank you. Are there any questions? I'm going to ask that first. Any questions? Seeing none, all those in favor?
I'm in favor.
That's okay, thank you. Councillor Tranchmontaigne? Do you have a question before we continue? Or do you want to hit us up after the meeting? Okay. You can interview us after the meeting on any questions, how's that? New Business, 24-67-01, ordered to appoint Shalamar Giliana de Busque and Derek Burke to the Sanford Trails Committee to fill two unexpired terms and each ending 12/31/24, and I hope I did an okay job on Shalamar's name. Do I have a motion? Councillor Hansman?
So moved.
Thank you. Second, councillor Martell, your turn.
I'll second it.
Thank you. Are there any questions? Seeing none, all those in favor? Councillor Tranchmontaigne?
I'm in favor.
Thank you. 24-60-01, ordered an ordinance making administrative and process amendments to the marijuana license sections of the city code. This item must be read on two separate days, this is the first reading. Are there any councillors who have any questions regarding this ordinance change before the next, second public meeting?
More comment in nature for those in the public. It's really, because we've been doing this for quite some time now and worked out a lot of kinks in that process, and this expediates the process of licensing, doing it at the administrative level versus waiting for scheduled city council meetings. Just wanted to share that.
And I'd say a lot of fears are gone, and you know, there's a good working relationship with our growers.
And then the only other comment would be that if there's a problem licensee, if that's the right term, you know, that this has any issues, they would not be eligible, is my understanding, for that administrative process that would come, come forward to the council.
Thank you. Okay, so that'll be on our next agenda on February 20th. 24-62-01, ordered to authorize funding for two septic systems, septic system replacements pursuant to the DEP Small Community Grant Program. Authorize a grant award and authorize collection by tax lien if necessary of any unreimbursed amount. I've been doing this for 20 years, and I told Mr. Howseal I'd never heard of this program, but it's a really good program. So take it away, Mr. Howseal.
It, it does seem to be a really good program. I had to talk with Steve about this and his experience in Arustic County, so he had to scratch the, the back parts of his mind on this, looking for examples. But, but it's very simple, well, it's not very simple. This is, this is a complicated grant. So I'm asking for your approval tonight. I'm trying to do everything upfront. There's going to have to be some public bids along the way. So the first one is a septic system design, and then there's going to be another bid for the actual design. So we've got to go out to public bid on these private properties. The 606 Oak Street is funded at 50%, and then the 485 Sam Allen Road is funded at 100% reimbursement to the city. So I just want to, this is what I want to address upfront. The, the program, excuse me, the program talks about different methods of collection. So I've talked with Joe Samar Perry about, he, he's going to attempt to get a bank loan. Actually, he's been attempting to get other forms of loans for a while, but if he can't get a bank loan, or we find ourselves in the position that we have to collect, we are authorized, the city is authorized, you are authorized to collect by a special tax and, and lien against the property. So that's a method also of payment on this. So I just want to bring that to your attention, and, and that's what I'm asking for tonight is to authorize the, the, the grant, the expenditure and collection if necessary.
Does anybody have any questions? Councillor Martell, query?
Just, just I guess a little clarification on this. So why these two properties and I assume they're on board with...
I'm assuming they have failing septic systems.
Yeah, so this is a first, this is the first time for myself and a first time for Sanford. We have no history of this whatsoever. These were both initiated by a code enforcement officer violation. You know, it was, I, I don't, I didn't particularly ask, but it was either self-reported or a complaint from the neighbor about a smelly, you know, system or something like that. And that, you know, necessitated repairing and really full refurbishment. I mean, that's what these are talking about for their septic system.
It is expensive to do a septic system.
Yeah, and, and then these are, so I mean, for, for my role, I mean, you know, the city is allowed per the grant programs, the DEP-defined grant program, Department of Environmental Protection, that we're allowed to take 50, excuse me, $500 in administrative fees at the end. It's not a very much large amount. Really tried, at least on the 50%, we've worked with York County Community Action to, to pursue, you know, rural development loans and some of those other pieces, so supporting that owner that way. But in the long term, we've, we've talked about or beginning to talk about with York County Community Action how to do this on a larger area, because Sanford is mostly, you know, public water and sewer. I'll say mostly, but you know, a, a large area, so it doesn't come up that much. There's some history, I've been looking into it, in Wells and some of those other areas. But it's, as awkward as the program is, it's, you know, $15,000 to $20,000, you know, someone who needs a septic system, you know, based on need and a defined program that's been in existence for a long time is a bad way to go.
No, I think it's great that that's available. Is that $50,000 like the total amount, or is that per person or per septic system?
I also wanted to make sure that we did these. We had, we had one that came in and then another one that came in immediately afterwards, and the DEP took quite a amount, a long time in approving the one that was 100% funded. So I was trying to consolidate them and bring... So I was trying to consolidate them and bring them to you as one item. And that fifty thousand, the way I understand that to be is that, that's, you know, as, will remain the same. So this is an amended letter they gave me that incorporates both properties. But I, that should be sufficient. Yeah, that should be sufficient for now. Basically, it's the way I read it.
I don't have a good feel for what a replacement is, but...
It's, it's about fifteen to twenty thousand.
Okay. All right. That's great. Thank you.
Okay. So do we have, we need a motion. Could I have a motion? Council Martel, thank you.
I'll second that.
Thank you. It's a good program. I think it's a great program, so. All those in favor? Council Tranche Montaigne?
I'm in favor.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, the next item. Twenty-four-twenty-eight-zero-one. Discussion, I'm gonna say that word twice, discussion, on potential amendments to Sanford ordinances, chapter two-fifteen, smoking and tobacco use pertaining to flavored tobacco products. Could I have a motion to discuss? Council Hitchcock?
Move to discuss.
Thank you. Council Hanselman?
I'll second that.
You hate them so much. So this started in property, I believe, and we were shown some example, because there are ordinances out there, several actually. And we asked the city manager to get some questions answered and then bring it before the full council. So kinda just did a little bit of preliminary. He's gonna give us a report on what he has found out, and I don't know if you've finished the legal review.
All right, I have. So the, it was a request. It went before the property subcommittee. We have at least two councilors that have been working with the school department as far as the vaping that's taking place in the high school especially, middle school as well. Research showed that there are six communities in the state of Maine that have already passed a similar type of ordinance that has banned the sale of, retail sale of flavored tobaccos. So extracted all of those six ordinances down, Larissa did. I looked, examined all of those. They were, they were all in commonality, which I find that a lot in municipal ordinances. So whomever drafted the first, it was in direct parallel with LD. It's in our LD twelve-fifteen, which is the state piece of legislation. State piece of legislation, all six communities that have done this before all use the same definitions, use the same expression of retail sales and such and to that. So I then looked at our chapter two-fifteen, which is smoking and tobacco use. Our city had been progressive as far as the licensing of retail, retail tobacco sales. Progressive in that we were an earlier community that came in and licensed those entities that sell retail tobacco simply to ensure that the placement of the tobacco products were behind the counter or otherwise in case and was secure, such that individuals under twenty-one could not easily obtain them. They were not placed at eye level for marketing towards children and such and to that. So we had all of that in place under our chapter two-fifteen. So I then did an initial draft of amending our chapter two-fifteen for what it would look like to do the same type of retail ban on flavored tobacco as the six other communities before us have done. And then also looked at the state law that I've highlighted here, which is LD twelve-fifteen. But in highlight, I wanna expressly point out, because we've had communications from several national organizations, as well as retailers, current retailers and such and to that. We, as a city, we're well aware of state law, twenty-two MRSA section fifteen-fifty-six, which requires, prior to the adoption of any municipal ordinance that is more restrictive than state law, as this draft would be, notice must be given to all retail tobacco licenses doing business in Sanford at least thirty days prior to consideration of the draft ordinance and moving to a public hearing or first read. So the action before the city council tonight is to discuss if they want to move that forward. It should also be viewed in light of the item up that's potentially up for discussion after this, which would be a resolution towards the state law. I would like you to think forward and view both of those at the same time. So if it is a decision of the city council tonight, with or without state action, right, to move this forward, then I would put in motion the thirty-day notice. We would set the date for a public hearing that would fall after that thirty-day notification. We'd put the notification out. We know that there, and I can't remember, Sue, if there's twenty or twenty-two, somewhere between twenty and twenty-two licensed retail sales operations in Sanford. So obviously, since they're licensed, we have their contact information and such and to that. They each would receive this notification, and then the council would move forward on a public process at that point in time. So the reason it's really before the city council tonight is, up until this, only the committee had looked at the first draft of the ordinance. And I have a memo in here that outlines that research and such and to that. Then in the packet is this first draft, which is now actually a second draft, because that first draft was sent to our legal counsel. The law firm, Law Firm of Bernstein Scher, Philip Saucier, our attorney on these matters, worked with Falmouth to put their ordinance in place. We already had this background in there. So he made some amendments to what I had drafted. Those amendments are in this, this evening. So it falls under article two of two-fifteen Tobacco and Paraphernalia Retail Sales. All of this prior work that you're seeing there now was about the licensing and ensuring the proper placement of product and such and to that. I had to add in here electronic smoking device, the definition. This is the same as the six other communities. It's the same as in the state law. Definition for flavored tobacco is, again, the same in all of those, those documents. All of this other information was already here as far as governing retail sales, the need for them to be licensed and the standards that comes with that. Can't have mobile vending that's prohibited. And then the applicable section that's up for discussion tonight is the sale of flavored tobacco products being prohibited. So should you decide to move this forward, this would be the format that the ordinance would be in. It would disallow retail sale or offer for sale any flavored tobacco product or display, market or advertise for the sale within the city of Sanford. There is a rebuttable presumption in here. The earliest of ordinances did not have that in there. The latter developed ordinances, obviously because of legal review, got into the rebuttable presumption, which the premise behind that, it looks at, it takes away those arguments of, well, it's not really flavored, but it may be labeled. It's only labeled that in the advertisement thereof and such. There's an enforcement and violation that puts the onus upon the city manager and/or his designee. Earlier in the ordinance, it has our code enforcement office and health, public health officers, officer, now officers. And then it sets up a fine structure should there be a first and/or a second violation in there and cites the state statutes that allows for that to take place. With this junction, the discussion really is no different than when retail sales of marijuana. The council discussed that at length before they made a decision to move that forward for adult-use sales, which we have that in our ordinances now. This is that same level of discussion as to whether the city council wants to move this forward as, as a body. And if that is a yes, then we would start that, that thirty-day notification in process.
Okay, so based on the agenda discussion we had with the mayor, my understanding was we were not gonna have the discussion of whether to move it forward until she could be present.
Okay.
I don't know if everybody wants to ask questions. I mean, if we have a consensus already of which way it would go, maybe, but I think she would like to be present for the discussion. But regardless, I think everybody should have a comment. I know everybody's had these feelings. You've gotten phone calls and letters. But I would remind everybody that a lot of people don't know we're considering this. There has been, I've, I've talked to both ends of the spectrum. I think the people who are most engaged are those people who sell, so that they were here this evening. And their, a public hearing would get a better blend of what the community feels, so it's not a bad process to go through. So I'm trying to think of how best to do this, because I don't, I do not get the impression we were gonna discuss, we were gonna vote on anything but the potential resolution or letter to the state.
So can I offer, also offer further information? So LD two-fifteen, which is the state legislation that seeks to ban it statewide, not dissimilar from what Massachusetts did. When you look at the twenty-twenty-three actions on that, it came out of committee. It was referred to the Senate. The Senate has voted to, to pass. So they've, they've engrossed that, passed as amended. It then went to the House. It's been read at the House in twenty-twenty-three. It was left as unfinished business in the House of Representatives. It was not voted upon. The House then carried it over. On July twenty-sixth, they carried that over to the, the current session. And it has been on the docket nine times since January third through February sixth, but as yet, it's still listed as unfinished business and has not been voted out. So it's my understanding if the legislature meets the timeframes that they're supposed to meet, they, they will adjourn by mid-April. At that point in time, you will know, should know definitively whether the state has enacted this and what the timing of that would be and/or did not enact this and what the timing, if they don't, didn't enact that, right? So that may round out your thought process as to whether you're gonna proceed forward at a future point or not. I know I'm blurring the two, but the second piece was, it was, it was, it was thought that perhaps if the city could order, could put forward a resolution of supporting LD twelve-fifteen at the state level. I think that, that, I know that that has passed, because it's, it's gone through the public hearing process. It's reported out of committee after work sessions and such and to that. If you had a resolution in support of the state's action on this, at best, I could submit it to our legislators in the House and offer that to them. So I've not drafted any form of a resolution for your consideration tonight, because all of that is tentative at best.
But we did put on here potentially an action to have you draft it.
Correct.
Okay. So we're gonna start a discussion. We might end up tabling this, because it really is on here for discussion, so there does not have to be an action. We could table the discussion for a later date, but I think everybody should kinda get out what, how they're feeling at this point based on discussions they've had in the public. So Council Hanselman, you had your hand up.
Thank you. And so, and partially in response to Mr. Mapes' question, he put forward in public comment, which I appreciated. The reason I'm open for discussion and conversation around this is that it came forward as a concern from our school department for the health and well-being of a significant portion of our youth who are really struggling with vape usage. And in speaking with my own children, I had the realization that they too have had that experience and that they are using flavored pods, I guess is that the term? And it's, it's an issue, so when it comes to our youth in our community, I rate that as something that's worth conversation anytime, pretty much. And, and we work really hard as a council, I think, on multiple levels to partner with our school department and try to resolve concerns, whether from the city side or the school side, and be partners here in Sanford. So I think that's where my interest lies in having these conversations. And I'm curious to hear from the councilors who are on that task force with the school department, some of the conversations around, you know, concerns about if we don't have it in Sanford, but it's in Lebanon, does it really, is it really impactful or how impactful is it? Or if there's feedback from communities in Massachusetts or Falmouth that have banned them, have they seen a reduction in vaping usage in their students moving up? You know, and my daughter said, well, it's too late. Everybody in the high school already uses vapes. They don't care. They'll continue to, whether they're flavored or not. And I said, it might be too late for you guys, but we're hoping it's not too late for our seventh and eighth graders and those kiddos coming up, kind of thing.
So they have discussed at these meetings, I was at the last meeting and Pete May won a way in, but they have, he wasn't at the last meeting. I went to the last meeting and I, I told them that we were putting this forward and they are gonna be anxious to be here for the public hearing. It's over sixty percent of students. It is filling the bathrooms, so it's regular students who aren't vaping. It's basically the bathrooms are vape zone. They're not a no-vape zone. They're, they're making a little bit of headway in trying to keep the bathrooms clear. It is, any, any little product, you could have a water bottle and it has a little vape piece to it, so you can have the water ball plus the vape, so you can't even tell a child's vaping most of the time. The flavors are lemonade and strawberry, watermelon, every, and they taste great. And so the kids don't realize what they're doing is, they're basically, they're, they're becoming addicts to nicotine. And it's a strong addiction. It is very difficult to break addiction. They don't even have enough resources. It's, it's different than just, you don't have to have the school here, but it's, it's a different sort of conversation. It's almost like dealing with someone who's addicted to a drug more than anything else. So it has that combination of drug versus nicotine. Then you have the health concerns. It's not just the potential cancer risk. It's also the popcorn lung that we've all talked about, the lung problems. I actually was at the Y last night and someone knew we were discussing this this evening and asked, you know, I wanna be there to speak. I let them know we're not discussing an ordinance. It isn't a public hearing yet, but they have lost nephew to the health, the health issue. It is, it's pretty, it's bad. It's, the health issue to this is bad. So I have a hard time myself, listening to what the school is saying and knowing what these kids face in their future because of their usage and whether someone gets to sell something that's so unhealthy. And it is, so Massachusetts, I believe, they were saying is having some good results from having banned it statewide. They are seeing some steps in the right direction. If you read reports, yes, it did shift sales over to New Hampshire, but I suspect that's adult use. It's a lot, it's a lot harder to sell to children or to have a child waiting outside to grab it if it's being sold in New Hampshire and it's a Massachusetts student, so.
Can I, can I jump in more?
Yep, I'm gonna go person by person. So go ahead, Council Tranche Montaigne.
All right, so I met with a couple of people that were lobbyists from the tobacco companies. If we're talking about a ban, I wanted to know everything. And what I found out was, our kids are being marketed to by the country of China. This ban won't stop it at all. There's a thirty million dollar sale online, and your kids go on to see things online? Those vape pens are marketed right there to them. It's an unfair playing field for even our American companies. And I'm not, I don't vape nicotine. I don't smoke cigarettes. So I'm not, not trying to stick up for anybody. I just think this is at a state level and a national level, because China is definitely flooding the markets to our children. These, if you take these vape pens, they're not, there's under twenty-five percent that are American companies. These kids are getting them, ordering them online before the parents come home. This is all true. So one of the things that I would love is our school department, do we have, do we have vape monitors in the bathrooms? Do we, do we have something like that? Because they're out there and they're available. And this would help the teachers, another aid if the alarms go off. But I still think that because of the act of marketing by another, another country, it's not gonna do much here. It's really not. And, and I don't wanna impede on other companies. I don't wanna do any of that. I would like to let the state go after the country that's marketing towards our kids. This is a hundred percent true. There's no, there's no fiction. This is a hundred percent true. They're marketing to our kids and they don't care. So I would, I would suggest we let our legislators try to come up with something. There's a bill out there now, Anne Marie, and, and it's a start, but they need to address the open marketing towards our children. And that's what state level does, not, not city council. And so I, I understand. I don't want popcorn lungs. I want, I want this marketing stopped. I want our kids left alone. I think we should definitely look at vape monitors or detectors or whatever they're called, every bathroom, every hallway, everywhere's where we need to be and help the kids that are addicted and get them into some, some help, because there is help for being addicted to nicotine and these kids need it. But this is, this is a scary slope. And that, that's just my take on this. And, and don't forget, I'm the guy that brought in vape cartridges originally for the terminally ill, for cannabis, in two thousand fourteen. And there was no, there was nothing about liquid nicotine, so that was never even in the thought. It's just another country that's running rampant with it. And it happened over two years when Jew, Jewels took over. And then they had, the popcorn lungs were vitamin E that they were using for the vape cartridges with the nicotine. And that was causing popcorn lung, and that was just killing people, lung transplants, and just killing people. We don't know what testing is in the liquid nicotine that's coming from China. We don't. Our, our American companies, they go through standard tests, because they've been sued for billions already for marketing the kids in the seventies. It's just an unlevel playing field, another way to look at things. But I believe our legislation should be being very aggressive about this at a state and a national level. And, and that's where I'm at, instead of being an overreach on city council. And that's where I'm at, instead of being an overreach on city council. And I know we're supposed to make decisions. And I'm not afraid to make a decision. If this is the last ditch effort to protect our kids, I'm not afraid to make that ban. But as it sits right now with the information that I have, and it's legit, it's a country that's marketing towards our kids. So we all have to get together and fight, but, but you start, you start taking legal products off the shelves. That might be a third of the market. It's 30 million online. So what is the total, total for the entire state of Maine for that? Which is revenue and taxes. And it's legal. So if it was illegal, no problem banning it. But this is a legal product and I know that China's are unsafe. So where do we go from here? We go to the state? We can go testify? We can do a lot of things, but I just don't like, like a total ban where we have seven different municipalities going to our school. I'll give you an example. I was a Hellion in school. If I went to Bedford and I was going to Sanford, right? And I was coming from a broken home, no money. And if you're telling me right now vapes are banned in Sanford in the mind frame that I was when I was in high school, I'd make five, 600 bucks a day because Bedford didn't ban it. So you have to understand this. And then what are we going to arrest these kids? You know? So let's really look at every aspect of this and then definitely discuss if we have to ban. But it's beyond us. It's 100% beyond us.
Well, this sounds like a vote for the next agenda item, Pete.
Yeah, yeah, maybe get the vape monitors, you know, get the vape monitors and help the teachers out as well.
And just so you know, it took town by town banning flavored tobacco and before the state took action, which is one of the reasons we discussed sending a letter up to, drafting something to send in support of the state taking action, so. So we'll discuss that in the next agenda item. Thanks for your comments. Everybody's going to take a turn. Who wants to go first, I think? Counselor Hitchcock, you want to go?
Oh, okay. So, we do have a very compelling issue. You have kids taking a product that they don't understand how it affects them. And it does have some very significant consequences on them that unfortunately they're not going to realize until it's too late. And so I do think there needs to be something done. My hesitation would be whether a full-on ban of the product itself is the right answer. You know, I have this vision of taking a sledgehammer to a nail. And while it's important to protect the kids here, I don't know if that sledgehammer is going to do what we want it to do. And so what I think I would like to do, what I would be in favor of in this discussion, is to come back to it and hear from our school department because, so they can answer questions for us about the impact this is having, some of the things they've done in the process. Some of the, you know, we're talking about Counselor Transmontane saying having vape, I don't know what they were called, but basically monitoring systems. Or if it's a, you know, how prevalent is the, are these sort of subterfuge tactics that the kids are doing?
They're actually begging us to do this.
Okay. Well, and I think in that way there could be, in that way I think there could be some sort of back and forth with them about, you know, getting those questions answered. You know, I understand that a public hearing might have that, but I think having some of those answers before we push forward on a public hearing, and granted, state might already decide at this point before we even get a chance to do that. But I think because there is some sort of impact, you know, on our adult citizens, especially those who do operate these stores that sell them, I think it's worth taking that extra step. Because I'm not saying that maybe a ban is the right answer. For right now, though, I think that we owe it to, you know, get those answers, to sort of take this a little bit slower and then come up with a great plan. Because this is going to take, if the state decides not to and we decide to do it, we're going to have a lot of concerned people asking why we're doing this on both sides. And so I think it's important that we have our facts straight before we go into a public hearing and...
That's why it says discussion.
Absolutely. No, absolutely. But what I'm, yeah, that's what I'm saying is I'd like to maybe come back to this discussion and maybe where, I know Steve was talking about there needs to be sort of this proposal to move forward to start these time clocks. I think if we have a little bit more, a few more ducks in the row, we can do this. If that data shows us, because I actually want to see that data of these places in Massachusetts who, what was their problem beforehand? They create this ban? Or is these other cities like Portland, I think Brunswick was one of them I saw, see how it's impacting them as well? And if it's a marketable improvement in how that works, then it may be something we need to do. So that's my, those are my thoughts. I would like to continue the discussion. I don't think I'm quite ready for a public hearing yet, but continue the discussion.
Yeah, I get the impression we shouldn't, we're not, we're probably not going to move forward with having him post the 30-day for the public hearing. I think we're going to have at least one more meeting where we have a conversation. Counselor Martell?
Okay, so I'll mirror some of the previous thoughts. You know, this started with the smoking, the vaping issue at the high school. We have, I would like to see them come here and discuss it a little bit. You know, if it's at the high level that I'm hearing, 60%, I think is the number that was thrown out there, what are they doing about it at the high school? Is there any sort of punishment process for that? How are they catching people? Seems like maybe that process needs some improvement. I'd like to know who's providing these to the minors? Because you have to be 21 to buy this stuff. So it's illegal for retailers to sell it to a minor or somebody under 21? And then I'm pretty sure it's also illegal for someone to provide this stuff to a minor. I don't see right now that banning it in the whole city is really the solution. Maybe it's a state-level solution. But I don't, generally I don't believe in banning anything outright that's a legal product. And just remember that, you know, vaping came out as a way to help people quit smoking cigarettes. So I know that it's sort of changed over the years, but that was one of the first things that they were using it for. So I'm, I'm not ready to move forward with this. So I'm opposed to it, as is. We can have some more discussions and maybe something will happen at the state level, but, you know, I'm opposed to this at this point. Thank you.
I just wanted to share, as somebody who watches a lot of the school committee meetings, that they did recently update their policy on vaping and the related, punishment, it sounds like the wrong word, but the ramifications of those rules. So they are working on that. They have a task force in place. So I just want to make sure that we're clear that it's an issue, but not an unaddressed issue on the school department side.
Oh, they're working hard on it. Southern Maine Health is involved, everybody.
They have a lot of experts at the table. So I'm not, and I'm only saying that just to make sure we're clear that, which I don't think you were, it's much the public knows. The school department is very much working on the issue. It's not something they're just throwing at the council.
It's taken, it's taken a lot of energy to deal with.
I would have liked to have seen somebody representing them here tonight.
This is, yeah, but this is a discussion. We actually asked them not to come because this is a discussion about whether, when we want to put this forward. They are, I mean, Pete and I were assigned to the task force for the city council. We've attended. We've heard the uphill battle that they're waging. So they can come and speak and, but they will tell you a lot of what we're telling you this evening. Counselor Stackpole?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. So, what we haven't come to agreement on as a council, which I think is a starting place for everybody, including the community, is how much damage are these items doing to the youth of our community? And apparently it's substantial, based on what we're hearing in terms of the underage group, the high school age group using these particular products. Then I think you need to ask yourself if there was another product that wasn't related to tobacco that was harming our youth related to whatever you want to think of, driving, eating, whatever, we as, and we were asked to help out in some way, I would be first in line to say we need to do this to help the youth of our community. Now, is that a silver bullet? Are we then going to see it stop? No. But I think we have to look at our limitations as a council and say this is the best we can do right now if we're concerned about flavored tobaccos harming our kids. If you're not concerned about that, then, you know, all other issues come off the table. But if you're concerned about kids as a council, then you want to say, you know, what can I do about it? It's not going to be a silver bullet. It's not going to end everything, but it's the best that we can do as a council right now if we care about it. And if we care about this affecting our kids that are in the community, it's also, I'm sure, a huge distraction to education. Which, don't, don't take that lightly either. Something being a huge distraction to education. You know, we just went through a pandemic. That was a huge, huge distraction to education. We don't need kids in school not learning because somebody beside them is vaping. I never saw this, but if it's coming out of a water bottle, somebody's sitting in there.
I learned that at the last meeting.
And their math class is vaping and, you know. If we can do something to help with that situation, we should be doing it. Now, so I'm in favor of continuing the discussion. If the state steps up, I think that's a much better solution than a piecemeal solution here in the community. And so on. If the, if it's banned federally, I mean, these all speak to some of the things that Pete's talking about. But we can't do anything about that. We can't reach out and touch China. We can't stop online sales. We can't do those things. But we can do something about selling flavored tobaccos in our stores. Now, does that mean some high school kid's uncle is not going to drive to Waterboro and buy stuff and buy 20, 25 of them, as Pete says, and the kid comes back and deals them in school? You know, who knows? But that's a whole different, that's something I think the school department can deal with, right? And, and get their hands around. It's the sneaky stuff that kids are real good at getting at, getting, doing, going in the bathroom, you know. They were doing it when we were in high school, right? They were doing it when I was in high, not smoking, not vaping, but smoking cigarettes, probably smoking other substances.
Bob said his brother was alcohol.
I went to high school in the, in the 60s, graduated in the early 70s, you know. So anyways, that's, I've probably gone on longer than I should here. But, but that's how I feel about it. And I, so I think we should move ahead to benefit our community. And I, if the school department's going to come here, let's see if they can get some volunteer students who are very concerned. One or two maybe come and speak to us about their concerns also. I think that's the heart of the issue for me is, is the kids and how it's affecting the kids and what we can do about it.
So what I'm going to do is leave this so when the mayor returns to have her schedule the next discussion. And whether, you know, and that discussion might lead to whether we put it, we decide to vote to put it out for public hearing. In the meantime, is that okay with everybody? That's the next step? In the meantime, we have the next agenda item. And based on my conversation here, this should pass. Because I was listening to everybody saying they'd like to get the state to do something before we have to. So 24-73-01, ordered to authorize the city manager to draft a resolution on behalf of the Sanford City Council in support of LD 1215, an act to ban the sale of flavored tobacco products. So could I have a motion on that one? Counselor Stackpole?
I'd like to.
So moved. We'll have some discussion, yeah. So moved.
Could I have a second? Pete, did you second that?
Yeah, I thought I firsted it, but I didn't, I seconded it.
I just sent him a text telling him how horrible he looks because he does look like he's ready to go to sleep.
Oh, man, I'm looking for some Nyquil soon as I'm done. I've already thrown up twice tonight.
I was looking on the big TV and then I looked down to the little screens in front of us and I'm like, "Oh my God, he looks exhausted." Okay.
Maybe a third would do it, Pete.
Am I coming, man? I feel horrible.
Okay, so if we're going to do this, Steve, would you like a small group of us to read it before it gets sent or do you want to?
I'd like to know what I'm putting in this resolution, right? Because, you know, I generally feel I'm pretty good about deriving consensus from council and I'm not hearing a lot of consensus here. So I don't know exactly what to put in the resolution. Is it something as simple as city council supports the state's action on a statewide ban of the flavored tobacco sales and that's it? Is it more bulleted than that? Is it incorporating the information from the school department about the severe numbers and such under that? Because I don't have those yet. I have it from, from other communities that have gone through this, but I don't have our numbers yet.
I would love to see some of our school numbers and make it personal to Sanford and that, you know, we're in support of, I mean, even if LD 20, if they knock it back a bit or whatever, something has to start. So I think it's more important that we say, "Here's what's happening in Sanford, therefore we are in support." That's my thought process.
I like that.
In support of the LD 1215. Sure, John.
I'll support the state thing, but you've talked a lot about vaping. It's, there'll still be vaping if you eliminate flavor ban. So I think you need to divide, separate that conversation. Flavor goes away, vaping's still here.
We know where the problem is, but the vaping is only attractive to the kids because of the flavors.
No, thank you for the extra, thank you for the extra 30 seconds.
I mean, I think it would be helpful, as said earlier, to maybe have some youth representatives here. But in talking to some youth that I know and that are in my family as well, if their first experience with a vape was unflavored, much like chewing tobacco, they would not have actually tried it again. It's kind of like they had a glass sip of my wine and they're like, "Oh, why do you drink that?" And they're like, "Put it away." So it's the, and in reading other research, it's the fact that it tastes good on initial try, "I'll try it again and again." And now, that's the concern with the...
Now the addiction starts, right?
The nicotine addiction, yeah.
Okay, thank you for that clarification.
And, you know, the nicotine addiction I've read is, is, I think, the worst drug addiction that you can have. They say it's even more powerful than opioids. Now, I mean, it's a different, it's not, well, cigarettes can kill you anyways in the long run, but it's the, you know, it's more of a long-term process than if you get addicted to heroin. But it's that same addiction that 30 years later, you'll still feel like having a smoke.
It is that bad. And I think Southern Maine Health would actually come because they're actively engaged in trying to prevent it as well as the recovery that they're trying to do with students. So, okay, so back to this.
Yeah, so as far as the resolution, I can, you know, I can draft something relatively simple, but I'll have to request the information from the school department. What I haven't heard discussed here this evening is, you know, if you do this ban on retail sales of flavored tobaccos, that's not just to kids, because they already can't buy it. It's adults as well, right? So there's that.
But I mean, when you're, when you're sitting in one of these meetings at the school department and they've taken away a vape and they're talking to the parents about the child's addiction and they're holding up the vape and the parent is saying, "Hey, that's my vape. He took it from me." And they were only upset that they had lost their vape. They weren't really upset about the fact that their child had developed an addiction because of something that they were seeing within the household.
Right, so I realize the ban is about, you know, limiting the availability, making it more difficult to obtain and such under that, but it's already illegal for them to purchase. It's illegal for them to possess until 18. Enforcement, enforcement, enforcement. I just, you know, I think about all of that, but. So elements that you want in the resolution beyond you support, you would, you would vote as a council to support the state's action on the, on the work of LD 1215? What beyond that? Including that Sanford's numbers?
Sanford's numbers.
That has the basis of your urgency on that.
Would you guys like to focus on the fact that it's the flavored vaping and pods and kind of really focus down on that's where our concern lies as opposed to menthol cigarettes and stuff like that? That are, you know, we realize that these, that this is an addiction and it's addiction with severe health consequences down the line or?
If that's what's driving it, I still don't support.
You don't have to vote for the, for sending this up, but for those who think that this would be helpful, is that, do you want to narrow it down to that point or just be very general?
We just think that the state should be reviewing this, you know? That's, I don't know how to put that. This is, this is definitely a state-level issue. It's a, it's a city-level issue too, but it's a state-level issue. So we're in favor of this going to the floor and letting our legislation decide. I guess that's...
Yeah, and if amendments are made, you know, we would like to see something to help us with our... I think it's a lot of, we'd like to see something passed by the state. I think it's a lot of, we'd like to see something passed by the state to help us with our efforts to stop student use of.
Yeah, there's got to be some programs for the kids. There's got to be something now because this is out of control.
And maybe even some financial support for the addiction it's causing in the school.
Oh, yeah.
So when I, when I asked the superintendent to provide me with information for the six community, you know, communicate with his peers, the other superintendents in those six communities that already had done the ban, was there a positive response? Was there a significant reduction and such and to that? He wasn't able to get that information for me timely for that particular subcommittee meeting. But he brought forward the, the state of Massachusetts, well, that was a statewide ban. There was a huge concerted effort around banning that statewide. There was a replacement. There was therapy. There was a lot of state resources that went into, you know, decreasing the overall use. Not just of those products, but tobacco products in general. So it was not applicable to the, you know, if an isolated community does it, but everybody around them does not. What, what is that? So I don't have that information at this point in time.
So from what I understand, Massachusetts passed it because all the towns, they were dropping quickly. So I think the resolution needs to say, look, to some degree that Sanford has been impacted. Sanford is considering this ordinance because we're impacted. And therefore we would, and we'd basically prefer to see something happen at a statewide level. Is that?
We would prefer, I think, as a council.
We prefer the state to take action because it would be easier.
That's the right thing to do.
It's a state issue.
All across the state.
I'm sorry, Pete, go ahead.
I just said it's a state, it's, it's, it's from, all across our state domain, this is an issue. This, we definitely should send it to the floor legislation and let it play out. That's, that I think would be the most responsible. For the city, we should also look at seeing what monitors cost, vape monitors. Let's, let's, let's at least get some information on that as well. And we can see about funding, but we have to do something for the kids right away.
Yeah, we're an active discussion person.
And then, and then the distribution, I can easily push this to our, our local representatives, but I could just as easily push it to all of the York County representatives. Because we have that database built from the homeless forum.
Okay.
It'd be nice, it would be nice to let them, I mean, I don't know if anybody thinks we need to be, I think it would be nice to let them know that's, that these conversations are actively happening and our school district is asking us to do something. You could actually add that to it because it's such a problem in our schools.
Yeah.
Yes, counsel.
Well, and Counselor Transmontane just said something that made me think a little bit. And I can hear past Mayor Cody's voice in my head a little bit when we were talking about a resolution under his term that wanted to send to Augusta and about not getting tied up in the work in Augusta and letting people communicate with their representatives individually. And having that separation a little bit between municipal and state government. But also, we recently did the housing resolution. We've done others as well. But I just, I guess I'm sharing like that balance, you know, between letting individuals communicate from our city with their representatives and/or the council as a body trying to move something forward. So I'm just speaking out loud, I guess, as I'm thinking about that balancing act. For me personally, I have deep concerns about the issue with our youth. And I personally am in support of that. I guess as a council, if we're pausing to let the state, and Counselor Transmontane said let the state work it out, which made me think, should we just let them work it out and see where they land? Or do we need to step up as a community to share? Or is it more lesser resolution and more here's what's happening in Sanford? And is that happening through the school department communicating with our legislators?
So, and from, from our representative, Ms. Strachey, she's, she said it's helpful to get something. And even if we're being, hey, schools talk to us, there's a discussion of a ban because the school's telling us it would make it easier for them to deal with the problem within the schools. And you kind of lay that out. And therefore we're asking that the state actually, you have something already in the works, you know? So why, it would be better if the state as a body did something about this epidemic. Something to that effect. I think she said because you have all these cities and towns, and there are more that are looking at this ordinance. There's Westbrook is looking at it. There are several that are still, haven't passed it yet, but they're looking at it. And the more they see that, she said, the more, you know, different representatives take it a little bit more to heart. Because they're getting the calls from big tobacco too. And so you have big tobacco lobbying on one side of the equation. And someone has to, you know, people have to lobby. And we can tell that to our constituents, but it would be nice to say, look, this is what people are, this is what the school's telling us. These are the problems they're seeing. You know, please do something, I guess is the, and then she can use that to say, hey, Sanford's having the same issues. Counselor Hitchcock?
Thank you. I'm, I'm just going to make my, say my piece and then however it goes. Again, just referencing my last statement, you know, my issue has always been, has been just the ban portion of it. I do think we should have some sort of resolution in place about how we encourage the state to take strong action against having flavored, you know, tobacco products in our schools and how it's impacting us. I, I think the motion as presented, because it supports the, the set, the statute as a full-on ban. I have a problem with it just at this point. It could be swayed later on when I have that more information. But, I mean, if the council ends up deciding that's what we want to do, I will, you know, stand tall with the council. But I just wanted to make my point note.
Yeah, and I think that's what Steve's asking when he's saying he's, he's got some confusions. Like, how do we want it to be phrased? Do we want to support LD 1215 outright as written? Or do we want to support some action and give them information of why we're supporting action and send that up?
So, so I think I would be more in support of, support of showing action, maybe not the specific language of this particular resolution or this particular plan or result to just outright ban it. Again, maybe I can be convinced in time about that. I'm, I'm open to the idea. So, you know, as the motion stands right now, it's to support the, the LD as written. So that's, that's how I'm phrasing it. You know, but I would definitely support some sort of strong action from state level to combat this, whether it's, they have the resources to combat the marketing piece that Counselor Transmontane's saying or raising costs of it based off of certain taxes. Like, I don't, I don't know what the right solution is in order to support a specific, you know, is it a full-on ban? Because that's just, it's totally the easiest to say, but there are other considerations.
1215's already made it through the Senate, so.
Oh, sure. And if it passes, it passes. And that's, and that's what our state representatives have said.
Well, see, that's the, when you, when it's gotten to the Senate, it's already dickered through a committee.
Sure.
So the committee's probably had all these conversations.
Oh, sure.
So that's why supporting outright the work they're doing. Like, if you've discovered that this is a good way to go, we can see why and we're, you know, that's kind of, so just remember that. They've done, they've done a lot of dickering.
Oh, I know, they've done, they've done the work. But as us as a, as a governing body, if we're making a voice saying we support that based off of that without, I guess, being there? I think that's where, that's, that's where my hesitation is. That way, I don't have that information. I could probably go look it up myself, but if we're making that decision today, that's the one, that's my, that's what I'm saying. And again, I will stand with the council on how we decide. And it sounds like maybe it is going to pass in the, in the, in the state government. And then this conversation is.
This sort of stuff helps, getting texts from Representative Ms. Strachey at the same time, but yes.
So, yeah, I don't, I don't think that this resolution is, is necessarily going to help or hurt anything. We don't really have full alignment on the council as far as a path forward, on what we all agree on. I don't agree on a ban. Personally, I think that more could happen, probably could happen at the school level to combat this. But, you know, that's to be determined. So I don't, I don't, I see resolutions as largely just a gesture, but doesn't necessarily do anything at the Augusta level, so.
It does, actually.
Okay, that's, that's an opinion, but I don't, I don't see that happening. So I don't support a resolution at this point. I don't think we have alignment, at least with the full council, so that's what we've got.
So the, the motion is to draft a resolution, not to actually send it. So it would be drafted. We would have an opportunity to review it and then give it a thumbs up or thumbs down. So I, I think what we're, what we're getting at is can, can, do we want to empower the city manager to draft the resolution? Not send it, but draft it and then bring it back to us. I don't know if that clarifies your, helps you clarify your position against or for at this point, because it's a draft. But that, that's, that's up to you, so.
If I can just quickly respond to that, I would, I would probably vote in favor of drafting something. That way we can take a look because we do need to have some sort of action or some, have our voice fight for what we are working with, with our own students and our own community. I'm happy to look at it, whether I agree with the full resolution or not. It's a topic for different discussion.
If, well, one, I always get concerned about staff time, including our city managers, if we're not going to move something forward. But if Steve were to draft a resolution for us, I wonder if we couldn't have the school department representatives speak to it at the same time we're looking at actually submitting it so that we could kind of do both of those things at once as part of that conversation.
Kind of nice if we all signed it together.
Yeah, well, and I was going to, I, actually, the other thing I was going to say is that potentially it's, it would be nice if this actually came out of our school department and the city council supported it. Not that Mr. Nelson doesn't have enough to do on his plate, but I almost feel like it's a, could be a resolution out of the school side that we in turn support. But either way, if we move forward with a draft option, it'd be great to have the school department part of that next conversation.
The school department just wants us to ban it. I mean, so they, this resolution idea is really because we're, we're not going to be able to ban it in time for them to have the discussion of 1215. That's why we're talking about the resolution. And so you can't ban it and send that message to Augusta. We don't have time to do that. So the resolution is an idea of, hey, we're having this conversation. We're serious. We're seeing the same problems. Do something. That's what the idea of the resolution was. So that's one, that's what the school department's asking us to do because it is tough.
Is there time to have that come back in two weeks or?
I don't, is, yeah. So let's have this discussion on the 20th. But in the meantime, I want to make sure before our city manager does the drafting that we have consensus, at least from four of us, that we want him to do so. So we have a motion? A second? All those in favor of having him draft something to be seen at our next meeting? Counselor Transmontane?
Yeah, I'd like to read the draft.
Okay, so that's five who would like to see a draft.
Yeah, until, then I'd like to make a decision after that.
Okay, thank you. All right, there we go. Time is it? Okay. Next on our agenda is all our stuff, so that's good. 24-11-01, order to review and adopt amendments to the city council code of conduct for 2024. And this is all stuff we discussed at our goal-setting session. So has everybody reviewed that? Pull it up. There were not too, too many changes, were there?
Deputy Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to pass the amended code of conduct.
Second.
Everybody has reviewed it and this is basically what we talked about?
We can discuss it.
Yep. Any other comments or concerns about the draft and what we've discussed? Okay, seeing none, I'll, everybody in favor? Thank you. Counselor Transmontane?
I am in favor.
Thank you, sir. 24-13-01, order to review and adopt amendments to the city council rules of procedure for 2024. So has everybody seen that one?
So moved. Moved approved.
Again, these are things that we looked at, at our last meeting.
I'll second.
And we talked about making, seeing how things went with the tabling before we made any significant changes there, so. Okay? I know. So this is the changes that we discussed. Any questions, comments, or concerns?
I just wanted to comment with a thanks to Larissa for praying all the time into not only attending the workshop, but also disseminating our comments into both these updated.
It's a lot easier now that she took it out of that crazy word format. That was last year's problem, right? Thank you, Larissa. Okay, all those in favor? Counselor Transmontane?
I am in favor.
Thank you, sir. 24-66-01, order to review and adopt the city council goals for 2024. So I think in this one, we might be able to just highlight the changes because we kept a lot of things.
A little too much, yeah.
In, we kept a lot of things in place. We made a word change in our mission statement. In particular, what did we take off? We felt we, we met the LD 2003 requirements. That's under strategy D, so that has been removed. And instead of developing a process, we're continuing to track zoning issues because we, there's a process been developed under our new planning director. Fund capital improvements program, incorporating the RACE grant. I believe with the RACE grant well underway, that's all in motion. And we've just, we've dealt with the rail trail, the issues we were having on the rail trail. So those have all been deleted. Improvements to budget, we basically set up a budget approval process after the city council was made the budget authority. And we've done the workshops on the various general budget. And, you know, we're still, we're still kind of adapting, but we're well on the way to having the city council in its position as the final budget authority. The next one, increased citizen engagement. We've done a lot, our hybrid meetings are actually probably some of the best run in the state, I would say. Because we, we have a handle on Zoom. And we're trying, I mean, all of them we were working on, let's put it that way. We didn't see it as a goal to put at the top of, with all our goals. So the big goals we're continuing to work on, the revitalization of downtown, which we hope will have a big boost with the RACE grant improvements. Housing continues to be a significant concern at the city councils and we're continuing to work with our partner organizations on that. Support of economic development will probably always be a strategy of the city council. Modernizing zoning, we are front and center focusing on our comprehensive plan, which our new planner is actively diving into as, as we, practically since day one. Fiscal planning, I think capital improvement program and the funding and continued support of the capital improvement plan is going to continue to be a struggle in this, especially in this budget season. But we are focused on the fire stations and getting our roads in a condition that we can get down to mostly maintenance as opposed to large reconstruction projects. And expanding and diversifying the tax base is all about economic development, improved housing, and, you know, taking things off of general taxation when we can. And I think that's, that's largely it. Does anybody else want to highlight some of our, the work that we're doing? Does anybody see anything that didn't make it through or any changes that were made that you didn't notice, Counselor Hanselman?
Uh, no, I just wanted to comment that I think our mission is one that we have to continually remind ourselves of. And I am on other boards, as probably a lot of you are, that will sometimes open their meetings. And I'm not saying we have to do this all the time, but they open their meetings by stating their mission. And it just keeps everybody kind of focused and energized and excited to be at the table. So it's something maybe we could work into our conversations more often, whether it's at subcommittees or full council meetings, but.
Would you like to read our mission statement?
Oh, I would love to.
Thank you.
And I just want to give a shout out to Counselor Stackpole who made a change that I think works really well. The current city council's mission is to provide responsive representation to the residents of Sanford while continually working to improve the community by establishing policy and ordinances and by voting appropriations through the budget that are focused on council-developed and resident-supported goals for the city.
The only fly I see is that you probably should say Sanford Springvale.
It would be a good opening to every televised council meeting.
You are not wrong.
Good evening.
Good evening.
This is the city council's mission, et cetera, et cetera.
The mayor might be mad if we make that happen while she's lying.
Well, no, she could assign it to each of us.
She's going to make us, she's going to call on people to read it.
It's your turn, it's your turn. She could just sign it out, so. Okay, so seeing no other comments, except maybe this Springvale change, I think that might be important to all my Springvale friends. So I would like to entertain a motion to pass our goals and object, goals for the 2024 year. Counselor Mottah? Thank you. Do I have a second? Second from Counselor Stackpole. All those in favor? Counselor Transmontane?
I am in favor.
Okay, you made it to the end, sir. And because you've been so good, I'm going to let you do council member comments first, just in case you pass out on us.
All right, so council, council member comments right here from. Counselor Transmontane, don't get sick. I, I don't get sick much and this is too much to deal with. I don't have time for this.
Do you have any future agenda items while you're on there?
Future agenda items? I just want to really think about this, this vape ban. I just want everybody to be really, really looking at the economics of it, looking at the school. I just want all aspects of this unturned before we go further. So if it goes to the state and they fail it, then we have to come. So if it goes to the state and they fail it, then we have to come back to it. So that's, on the future agenda, we'll have to deal with this.
Okay, thank you. Council Hitchcock, oh, Council Stackpole, you want to go next?
Yeah.
Be casual, go for it.
Not, don't want to step on anybody's toes.
He doesn't mind.
But I, I was driving down the road, this, this is an old, old drum I'm gonna bang. I was driving down the road, I had to take my cat to the, to the vet today, and I see down by Cumberland Farms, an individual in a motorized wheelchair, driving the wrong way, I'm, I'm going towards South Sanford, they're going towards the square, the wrong way down Main Street, and I, I just have to say, I am and have been deathly concerned that there's going to be a horrible accident someday with an individual on one of these handicap wheelchairs and an automobile. And I would hate to be the person in the automobile. So this is really just a reminder, and I, I haven't said this for a couple of years, I know the sidewalks are not always in perfect condition and there will be times when people with these devices will have to drive in the street or swing out in the street, but if the sidewalks are clear, please get up on the sidewalks, because I'm just really concerned that we're gonna have something horrible happen to somebody in this community. So, and it's an easy solution, just, you know, you could say the same thing about some people with bicycles also, they're, some of them are not following anywhere near the traffic rules, so, and they're not, they're not all kids either, you know? You, you need to ride with traffic on both sides, et cetera, et cetera, and, and be careful. I mean, people get killed every year in the state of Maine through pedestrian accidents, walking, biking. I don't know if I've ever heard of one with a motorized wheelchair, but I hope I never do, so that's, that's it for me tonight.
Thank you. I just wanted to share to the community some, some good and bad news, I think both, I guess, not necessarily bad, but maybe a plea for consideration, continued support, and that's for the Sanford Backpack Program, who's been formally in existence for over ten years now, and the program, which I among others have been really involved with, is one that provides nutritionally dense food to our students each Friday or Thursday of the school year with the intent of helping them bridge the gap between what are now free school meals. And we currently serve just under 250 students with food-filled backpacks in addition to community distributions where we, at the school site, as well as within our community as a whole, distribute just hundreds of thousands of pounds of food to the Sanford community. And so due to a multitude of factors, including increased use, some changes in funding sources, and the fact that since COVID we haven't done a big fundraiser, we are looking at meeting funding for the next school year. And to that end, the exciting news is that we do have a Chocolate Benefit 2024 coming up in May, May eighteenth, the Memorial Gym has been officially reserved for that use. And so folks in the community will be seeing us talking about ticket sales, sponsorship, raffle opportunities, and your support as a community will be really appreciated, so thank you.
All right, thank you. Just going back to the, the vape and tobacco ban, I think that that's something that we just need to look at all the aspects and, and options before we just go straight to a ban. So, thank you very much.
Yes, thank you. I just want to thank everyone who's come out here to voice their concerns about, you know, what's our goings on the city and thankful for the fruitful discussion we had here today. And also just a plug for thanking our emergency responders, especially in the season, the winter season, where you have a lot of car accidents and unfortunate icy roads, and every time I've driven by, you know, these accidents can look a little rough, but they're always there to make sure that traffic's going smoothly and responding very quickly, and I appreciate that, just want to share that and thank you. What's that? No, I, I wasn't in an accident, I drive by them, but yes, hopefully I will not be anytime soon. I've, I've skidded on the snow once, it was not pleasant experience.
Okay. I actually don't have anything this evening, I think I've said enough, right? Thank you. Okay, future agenda items, I have two, but I'll see if anybody else has some. I've already mentioned these to the mayor and I've made the city manager way aware, these are both zoning issues. Potential zoning, yes, they're both zoning issues, so you guys get to talk about it. So two, one, looking at our ordinances for fairgrounds and seeing if we need to set a moratorium so that we can potentially review, do we have strong enough ordinances for fairgrounds, because there is an app, there's gonna potential application, and I think our ordinances are fairly vague on fairgrounds. And the other was, and Steve said, this is, and it's gonna be a review of it, do we need to do the same thing for this, but like a, a large campground on potentially a pond that can't support it because it's already overused, and how do, how does that work? Because you're talking about the large campground with small access points, so you're adding, like how much can you actually add to a pond before it's too much? So those are gonna be discussions and the zoning subcommittee will hopefully come out with, do we need to do a moratorium to work on something or are we all, all set? So those, that's what the zoning subcommittee will be talking about. Okay, so those are the two I had. Does anybody have anything else now that I've said something? No. Okay. Bob and I are usually there, okay. Okay, sounds good. Do you have anything else for us, Steve, or can we?
Can we have coffee for the, for the Chocolate Festival this year, Ann?
Ooh, you need a coffee.
And can, can we have a really nice coffee roaster there for the Chocolate Festival? Because, you know, I got chocolate, I need, I need my cup of coffee.
Absolutely. Maybe we'll bring the Franny's espresso machine, have a barista there.
Oh, that could be fun.
That's a great idea.
If you'll go, I'll, I'll do it, Steve.
You could do coffee with different type of chocolate, like stuff or?
Yeah, absolutely.
Bourbon goes really good with chocolate, but I didn't see.
Well, so Cruising Infusion has agreed to be our bar on site and we'll be coming forward for a special events license for that, so.
Jamie will be passing it right through, so, and as will Sue. Okay, so, and I'll put, and I will ask again for what Ann, I know, wants to ask, if you have some pennies, if you have some donation you can make to the backpack program to help them make it through the school year, many, many families would be very appreciative. So that being said, I will declare us adjourned. Thank you.
Sounds good.